I will call the meeting to order for March 18th, 2019, Lake County Board of Commissioners. If you'd join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. There's a little baby flag over there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Correspondence we received from Cindy Nelson. An historical report of the history of the Sylvan Grove Senior Center.
I had given that report four weeks ago.
Okay, so you checked it up. Thank you. To the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners, a courtesy notice that the Natural Gas Company of America LLC will be performing a routine internal inspection on its existing high-pressure natural gas pipeline located in the following locations. So, I'm assuming that they also, we are CC'd on this and they send it to the landowners. It's from the Natural Gas Pipeline Company. Kansas Department of Commerce is having an annual workshop, April 18th, in Salina Free at Tony's Pizza Event Center. And OCCK sent out their report, I think this is quarterly newsletter. Nope, this is February's. It must be monthly. And some bills from Lincoln Park Manor. Let's see, street plumbing, two different bills. Labor for $195 and foil tape for $15.57. One of the residence rooms ventilation, it looks like they were taping for several hours. Lincoln Park Manor, street plumbing, a sink trap cleaner, kitchen sink strainer, and a small sewer machine. I'm assuming that must be like a snake. Sink in assisted living kitchen dining area clogged, draining slow. And a call back the next day, they ran the snake through the sink drain and that fixed it. The first they had tried cleaner, drain cleaner, drain opener. $325 for labor out of that. I assume that's because we don't have a maintenance person there, which it is in the lease with the contract stating that they would provide their own maintenance person. If all they were going to do was put drain unclotter down the hole, then I would think that would be something that the maintenance person would do. Now that running the snake, I can see we would call someone in for that unless you, I mean, it's probably just a handheld one, I would assume, because it's a...
Well, they had that. I was up there looking around, I saw this Jonathan.
She'll...
He's like the maintenance guy now, but I don't, but I don't know if he can do this better for me.
Well, three, six, and seven, those were weekdays. It's not as if it happened on a weekend. I mean, six and seven was Wednesday and Thursday. I mean, that concerns me a little bit if we're gonna keep being nickled and dimed for every last hair in the sink.
Well, it probably comes down to what the county is responsible for with the building and what they are. That's...
Well, the problem, the lease...
Is there a good description of that?
No, the lease is poorly written. It basically says that they will provide a maintenance person, but it doesn't say what that maintenance person is obligated to do versus where we will step in and pay a $400 bill for one sink. We could've bought a new sink for $400 and a drain, not just paid $325 in labor to put down some drano and run a hand snake.
Yeah, well, that's an issue we have with what we're responsible for versus what they are.
Right. So, it makes you wonder who called that in and why it wasn't given to, I think we need to question that. Who called it in as opposed to having the maintenance person do it? Because we...
Well, yeah, we should ask that Jonathan, if he, can you do that or is that something you can't do? You know? Because he's pretty good, because he went on the roof and fixed part of that roof, could have been leaking, the pipes were stuck in the, the vent pipes were like coming down, it kept on just wear all the time. He fixed a lot of that and I've talked to him up in, I was up there looking around. But I think he's not, but I, again, there you go, I don't know if he can do all this stuff, so, I don't know. That's maybe something we should talk about.
Yeah, I mean, they're calculating five hours for the drano and the run a snake.
Cindy had it put...
Do they have their own snake?
I would think that you would have to in a facility like that, I do.
I do.
Yeah, I, I don't know. Well, I'll question, well, maybe we'll call up there. And then we have high-tech fire alarm sales and service. I'm assuming this is for Lincoln Park Manor, but it's billed to you, Don, is that from Lincoln Park Manor?
I'm sure it is.
It doesn't say particularly, but it's from Ellis, Kansas. A smoke detector, a 120-volt smoke detector with battery and backup, and two more smoke detectors ordered, yes, here it is, Lincoln Park Manor. $196. And then Ready Industries pump grease trap and thousand gallons, $500. And is this a...
That is a February, I looked back. The one that we paid in January was for October and that was cleaned up in Fe, or that is the February bill, so that would be the one that was just done.
Right. And again, I mean, as a tenant, it doesn't say that we are responsible for their cleaning bills. I mean, that's basically a cleaning bill. If you're creating the sewage, then you're cleaning the sewage, but that needs to be addressed in the lease in the future, for sure. We have a cereal...
Yeah, this is right, you're, this is another one where, is that their responsibility or the county's?
The lease is so poorly written that we can't really, I guess we can't probably have a discrepancy there that's legitimate. We have an application for 2019 cereal malt beverage temporary license. It will expire on July 31st, 2018. It is for the Sylvan Grove Fair and Ag Association. I would entertain a motion to approve.
2019.
Did I say 18? Oh, excuse me, 2019, I was reading it right off.
Is that a 2019 form?
It's 2019, yeah.
Okay.
No, no, it was, I just, I saw the number and said the wrong one.
No, it does not. It is not correct. It does say it'll expire on January 31st, 2018, needs to be corrected.
Oh, thank you, okay, okay.
Just make the eight and nine.
Then I'm not correct.
You want me to do that?
Yeah.
You sure?
Yes.
I won't get in trouble.
No.
I don't want to be in prison.
No.
And I can read!
Well, it's wrong. Oh, they did.
I can hear.
Yep, there you go.
I will move that we approve the cereal malt beverage for Sylvan...
Thank you.
Fair Board.
I'll second.
There's no further discussion. All those in favor for the 2019 cereal malt beverage Sylvan Grove Fair and Ag Association vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. And none opposed.
That's correct.
Yes, the, yeah, that one says 19, it was just 18 said on the expiry, expiration. Don, do I sign this? It says...
Yes.
Okay. And I believe that concludes the correspondence that we've received for today.
Here it is back. They got stuff.
Yes, yes. If you'd like to take a look at the minutes from March 11th, 2019. We read correspondence, we approved the mailer to residential and business properties in Lincoln. Did everyone receive theirs? Your mailer and the mail?
Yeah. I go.
I see some of the Sylvan, the outlined places may not receive them until today because we mailed them from Lincoln, so I'm gonna have to try and...
Mm-hmm, then we'd have to go down and come back to that other outlet, yeah.
Yeah.
Understood. We approved the minutes and we reviewed the information from Susan Lang from the U.S. Department of Labor and Wage in our division. Let's see, we had the highway department in and the health department, we did the evaluation there, a set of evaluations for that department. And we talked about the tie box system and the adjournment. I don't see anything that needs change. Doesn't even have any additions or corrections to the minutes.
Bill, I make a motion to approve the minutes for March 11th, 2019.
Second.
Motion, a second, for the approval of the minutes for March 11th, 2019. If there's no further discussion, those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
And none opposed. All right. First on our agenda today, we have David Doe. So, if you're ready, I think we're done with our preliminary order here. Thank you.
I'm just coming before the commission this morning to give you information as to what training I've been to recently and, and things that I've been doing. Friday, January 21st, workshop on how the notification for the request of an IMT team is transitioned from the Kansas Division of Emergency Management, KDEM, state duty officer, is completed and all of the things that have been, that have to happen to get the IMT advanced team responding to an incident. The seven members of the North Central AHIMT team went over the taskbooks and training dates for classes that have been completed. Reference taskbooks, specific training to North Central Division Supervisor Pam Kemp took the information as presented. That's the first attachment that I have included in that packet. And I think I misspoke on that. The LEPC met on January 28th. Items discussed were the after-action report from the high-rise tabletop exercise held on December 14th with full-scale exercise planned for early August with Lincoln City Fire, EMS, and Rescue. There was discussion about the upcoming full-scale exercise on March 23rd involving USD 299, law enforcement officials, EMS, Lincoln Fire, Lincoln Park Manor, and Lincoln County Hospital. Sean Estrle also wanted to be included in the exercise. North Central Kansas Division of Emergency Management. Eric Stu reiterated the importance of training when ICS classes are offered in the region as this will set bar when an incident happens in the community. What you learn, train, and respond will show deficiency, and this is a good chance to correct the identified problems. The LEPC tabletop exercise scheduled for February 19th was rescheduled due to weather. The new date is Thursday, March 7th, at the same venue. Deputy Gary Kuhn will not be able to attend as he had previously scheduled training in Wichita. However, at this time, we still have four representatives that are scheduled to attend the KDEM, excuse me, to attend. KDEM has mandated that if your LEPC is attending, you must have at least four people for the tabletop exercise. There is a public health tabletop scheduled for March 20th in the basement at the Methodist Church. This will be from 10:00 to 2:00. Thursday, January 29th, lifesave transport and an ambulance service was at LCH and had the flight team go in and meet, work with the ER staff in the hospital from around 11:00 a.m. when they landed and stayed around until 3:00 that afternoon. With their arrival, Lincoln Fire Department was paged out to set up LZ in the area of the Lincoln practice football field just south of Metner Field. Lincoln Fire Department responded and set up the LZ, and then the pilot of the aircraft walked the first responders around the aircraft and gave direction as to lifesave, as to how lifesave operates with our first responders when coming in for landing, and then once on the ground, what the protocol is for approaching the aircraft. The week of February 4th through the 8th, I attended the training workshop in Salina at Western Conference Center for the Kansas All-Hazard Incident Management Team. Again, that's the initial, the initial attachment that I have, sorry, this is Kansas AHIMT Annual Symposium. Again, each day, it shows the trainings that I went and sat in on. Overall, the primary response from all the workshops is that after a disaster strikes your community, the commissioners must sign a disaster declaration, and then the state can send in resources like the Kansas All-Hazard Incident Management Team. The first seven days are covered under state mutual aid. When a federal disaster, excuse me, declaration is declared, then the federal government pays 75% of our, of our match, is 25%. Volunteer time is figured, and if you have ICS training that is required by FEMA, then those first responders' times can be counted as in-kind match. This is why I've been on a push with local departments and essential staff that all be needed in the event of a disaster. There's a G-300 intermediate class, which was held in Beloit, March 12th and 13th, from 8:00 to 5:00. I pushed out the information with four different emails. I had one person sign up for the class, and actually, there was another one that was from Lincoln County Hospital. So, there were two representatives from Lincoln County. I've scheduled a G-402 Incident Command System Class Overview for Executive and Senior Officials Course for April 29th, from 1:00 to 5:00 in the afternoon in the basement of Lincoln Park Manor. Target audience for this course includes executive session, or, I'm sorry, executive senior officials, including elected officials, city-county government managers, agency administrators, et cetera, that might be involved in an emergency management incident with the following objectives. And again, that's the third attachment that you have. It has a 402 information on it. Again, below that is, is things that are on that flyer also. I'm going to go down to Wednesday, January 9th. Michael O'Hara, the Public Works Director, and I attended the floodplain mapping meeting in Ottawa County. With that discussion, we were told that Lincoln County does participate in the National Flood Plane Insurance Program, NFIP, effective since May 13th of 2004, is adopted by Resolution 2004-11. On February 18th, I received an email from Tara Lansworth with the Kansas Division of, Department of Agriculture, KDA, Division of Water Resources, stating that since Lincoln County participates in the NFIP, we think it makes sense to include Lincoln County within the mapping update. Please let us know if you have any questions or concerns with that. Seems like Lincoln County is long overdue for floodplain maps, so we are glad to be able to start a project here. As a reminder, project information can be found on the website. We should have initial base level engineering BLE draft floodplanes available in the April timeframe with another meeting to occur this summer that we'll go over more project specifics. We're still several years away from the effective maps, estimated fall of 2022, and we will keep you posted throughout the process. With this process, the Lincoln County Flood Plane Administrator needs to be compliant with the NFIP program as mandated with the Flood Plane Administrator Management Resolution 2004-11, signed on May 13th, 2004, by the Lincoln County Commissioners. On Friday, January 18th, I attended the Lincoln Fire Meeting and demonstrated how to set up and take apart the decontamination shower that was a grant then that is stored at the hospital. This shower system will be set up and utilized for the exercise coming up on Saturday, March 23rd, in the area of the county fuel site on 9th Street. I also have received participation waiver forms from all fire department personnel that were at the meeting, asking for them to be available for the exercise on March 23rd with a start time of the exercise at 9:00 through tentative timeframe of 3:00. I spoke to the group about the importance of being, having ICS system in place for Lincoln County and why we have the ICS system. Thursday, February 25th, North Central Kansas Emergency Management Association held a meeting in Osburn. David Hogg presented information about African swine flu, which is currently rampant in China. This is considered the Ebola for pigs. 100% mortality rate once a pig is exposed. Not contagious to birds or cows. A pig can be infected five to seven days before the onset of the disease is visible. Primary sign for the pig is being infected is bloody diarrhea. The Kansas Pork Association has stated that if this disease is entered into Kansas, one out of every four pork producers will be gone or no longer have their business. It is a healthy virus and it can be, live through processing, however, it will not affect a person that is, that it is consumed by. It is to be introduced through soybean meal. Six months is a half-life for the virus. Kansas is ranked ninth out of 15 states for swine producers in the United States. Bike Across Kansas, in its 45th year, will be coming through Lincoln County. The start date is June 8th through the 15th with an estimated 850 cyclists on this 478-mile journey. The cyclists will be coming through Lincoln County for the scheduled overnight stay in Minneapolis on June 12th. There was discussion about new website that is still in the build-out phase that can maintain records for any first responder. The person that signs up can decide who they want to see their training credentials, and they have the capability to manage and customize their own resource catalog and specific position requirements. Wednesday, 27th, I received an email from KDEM, Kansas Division of Emergency Management, referenced the multi-year Emergency Management Performance Grant Guidelines, just updated for 2019. There are multiple changes to the training and exercise sections for the 2019 year. FEMA has not yet released the four-year 2019 EMPG grant to the state and territories yet as Congress just finally passed a budget this month, and now FEMA has to prepare their 2019 grants. As it stands now, we anticipate a similar timeframe, excuse me, timeline for the 2019 EMPG grant as we had for the 2018 grant. KDEM is processing the paperwork submitted to be able to make the 2018 EMPG payments in March where possible. The criteria for determining awards will be the same as in previous years. The breakdown in distributions is made in the following manner. Population, vulnerable needs population, income and jobs, property and assist values, livestock and crops, and transportation and hazardous materials. Prior to allocation of any federal preparedness grant awards, recipients must ensure and maintain adoption and implementation of NIMS, State of Kansas Executive Order 5-03, established by the National Incident Management System, NIMS, as the state standard for incident management. DHS, Department of Homeland Security, and FEMA describes the specific activities involved in NIMS implementation. Its fundamental part of building national preparedness, NIMS implementation objectives for local, state, tribal, and territorial jurisdictions was released in 2018 and aims to promote consistency in NIMS implementation across the nation. Jurisdictions and organizations must achieve or be actively working to achieve all of the NIMS implementation objectives. The county emergency manager shall serve as a primary point of contact and principal coordinator for the implementation of NIMS. With the appointment as the POC, I would request that in the next scheduled update of the Lincoln County Employee Handbook, through the pre-employment process, that whatever department is hiring the individual, that they must go online to the FEMA web site and take the IS-100 correction, IS-700 NIMS and introduction, and IS-100 Introduction to the Incident Command System Training before being released to go to the department head for employment. Under Lincoln County Resolution 2005-14, adopted July 5th of 2005, it is hereby adopted that the Board of County Commissioners of Lincoln County, Kansas, meeting in regular session the 5th day of July, under the laws of the State of Kansas, does hereby establish the National Incident Management System, NIMS, as a county standard for incident management.
Okay, excuse me, David.
Yes, ma'am.
Go back, what positions are you recommending that for?
Any, any county, any county employee that is, is hired by the county should have that training, because again, we don't know at what point, any, any position within the county will be asked to come help at that incident, whether it's highway department, whether it's mental health, whether it's courthouse staff, again, we don't know. So, rather than getting in a, a, we're not doing it position, if we can just mandate that, that all that is done through the pre-employment process, or, or after they get approved with their physical and their UA that they have to do and any other background, that should be one of the first things that we require to be done.
I mean, I'm, I'm not opposed to considering that for certain positions, but across the board, I think we have enough issues with our, within our own departments of training on their own job that they perform every day. So, I think we need to narrow that down. But I'm, I'm not opposed to the suggestion. Do we have any input from the board on that?
Well, how extensive is that training?
It's a four-hour course online, is how it's offered at this time.
What I'm saying is you're, you're also then putting them in the position where, and it's basically, I mean, you already read it, it's so that we can get reimbursed, because if we don't have people who have those credentials and they report to the scene, then they're not reimbursable. So, I understand the point here, but it's also an obligatory thing as far as if you're the one that is credentialed, but you can't make it, but your neighbor can make it who's not credentialed, it shouldn't matter as far as actually physically helping. But I can see mandating or requiring it for certain positions, but I'm not gonna say that it should be across the board for every single employee of the county. I mean, we don't even have training requirements within departments for their own jobs, so to me, that's getting a little the cart before the horse there. Mr. Wallace, do you have a comment on that concept?
Well, four hours bothers me a little, because we'll be paying for it. I mean, that's, that's it, you know? If we ever have an incident, yeah, we'll, we'll want, make sure they have. I guess, I, I don't know what the real answer is. I know that time costs money for the county, you know?
But we can't continue to, to use that as an excuse for lack of training.
I, I understand that, but I, I guess what I'm saying is, is it better for us to do it as they each come on, or should we spend that time on the employment, the day that we usually have employment issues brought? Would that be a time that we could, we could train every year or so? I mean, or every other year, have a course or have that? You know, I guess...
Is it eight hours total? Eight, four for the 700, four for the 100? Yes, so it's eight hours total.
Correct.
And like I'm saying...
It's a day, it's a day at work. I guess, you know, it's a day's pay, you know? If we blow away, yes, it's money well spent. If we don't blow away in the next 50 years, it's money wasted probably, but...
You think Eureka has the same thinking mentality-wise?
Well...
Because they've had two tornadoes in the past three years.
Yeah, you know, as I said, I said, we're taking, we're ta, we're, we're taking a gamble. That's what we are, you know? And I don't know, what percent of our employees are able, do you know?
I have no idea. I could start digging back through the records and the credentials and see what percent in place.
You know, I, I think that, that's probably part of the deal too, you know? If we're, if we're very low, yeah, we better do something about it.
Well, and I'm not opposed to spreading out the knowledge, I mean, that, that is a good idea, but what I'm saying is, we can't have every single employee mandated to do something like this when we have departments that aren't even mandated for their own training. I mean, it's, that's a little, we need to, as the commission, we need to prioritize which employees need to know what. I mean, if, you know, myself, I'll just use myself as an example, myself with four little children at home is not going to be available in an emergency to go out and help in a physical realm like that. So, there's a difference between who you're calling out to the scene. I'm sure the county appraiser, and, and that's, this is just hypothetical, didn't sign up so that she could be part of the incident command team. So, there's a little bit of a, and, and she's elected official, so I guess it's not, or no, the appraiser's not elected official anymore, excuse me. So, I guess it's, it's a, it's a discrepancy issue on, on my end. To have a mandate is...
Okay, well then, if, if the county's not wanting to... Okay, well then, if the county is not wanting to, to participate in, in mandatorily approving that, that, as again, was adopted back in the day, and I didn't bring a copy of the resolution, but I have it.
Well, it says, "Does hereby establish the National Incident Management System as the county standard for incident management." So that's why we have an emergency management department at all, as opposed to not having one. It's not that every single county employee is going to be part of that response team.
Again, how do we know, how do we know that? Or how do, again, we're second guessing and we're preparing for that?
It would make more sense to ask all of the fire departments to be up to date on their credentialing.
And I'm working on that. I'm working on that.
Okay, so I'm saying, to have the county health department nurse who works one day a week be credentialed to do this is not something that I think the county needs to support.
They've already, all the employees have already had the 100, 200, 700, 800, 300, and 400. They've had all those classes. Those were taken care of when Rodney was here back in the inception of this ordinance.
On their own time?
No.
By their own choice.
They were paid, they were paid as a county employee, they were paid as a county employee back when we had training sessions on Columbus Day, back, I couldn't tell you the timeframe of the year, but, but previously, the 1, 2, 7, and 8 were offered as all county employees that were, that were employees back whenever, and that was through my, my working at the sheriff's office, I got exposed to that also. And then the 300 and the 400, I attended with the fire chiefs in December of 16 or 15, and the chiefs and the assistant chiefs at that time got that class also. And again, chiefs and assistant chiefs, again, Rodney used to be a trainer for the state, that he had taken the classes and whatnot to be able to train his local first responders. So he would set that up on a Thursday night through the month of November, on the, each Thursday night from 7:00 to 9:00 PM, or 9:00 PM, he would have those classes. And again, all those people, all the chiefs and the assistant chiefs back in 2016 took the class. Again, with the 300 class that, that was just had up in Mitchell County on the 12th and 13th, I had sent out no more than, or no less than four emails that, that addressed that with people within the county, chiefs, assistant chiefs, representatives from the sheriff's office, and another elected official here in the courthouse. And, and of those, of those people, I probably had 10, and I had two that responded. So, you know, again, they, they took the time out of their day to, to do that. You know, that, that they see the buy-in and why we do this. Are we proactively working on it? And now, if you don't have that training, I'm not giving you a credential. I'm, I'm, I'm not doing it. It's my way to get you to be compliant with that. So any first responder, that fire department representative or firefighter, I don't, I told the chief, gets 100 and 700 training from them, I don't give them a credential.
Well, and that's fine. I'm just going back to the concept of every single employee, I mean, we have 70, do we have, how many employees do we have right now, Don? I'm sorry.
I would say at least 72.
72? Okay, so just in some round numbers, I mean.
I would say over, over that 72, I would say over 50% have that training. Probably if not closer to 60.
Okay.
But again, there are certain departments that.
It's more applicable to certain.
So we already have about, more than half of them got it then.
Yes.
So you only need the other half. Like, I kind of agree with Alexa, there's some people, like she just said, with her children at home, she probably isn't going to go out and be in the first responder anyway.
I'm not coming out to the middle of a tornado scene when my own kids are just in the basement.
Maybe not everybody has to take it.
But again, like, for example, also, if you as the county commissioner and you're the chairperson, and I'm gonna address this directly to you, and, and we reach our resource capability, and then I notify the state, hey, they declared a disaster declaration, I'm gonna be calling you after the tornado comes rolling through, whatever time that is, 3:00 in the morning, I'm gonna be calling you. Because you're the chair.
I'm not worried about being contacted. What I'm saying is, my physical efforts are going to be limited. So are other people's in any kind of situation.
I'm explaining this, I'm explaining this, okay? And with that though, again, when the state incident management team comes in, because we've exceeded our capacity of what we can do to respond, then the state incident management team is gonna wanna meet with you. And whether it's 8:00 in the morning, or 7:00 in the morning, or as soon as he can get here in three hours, I don't know. But again, he's gonna, he's gonna be wanting to meet with you as the chair, and again, that's one of the attachments that I have, that addresses the issues with.
Well, I give out my cell phone number freely. I always take phone calls. I mean, you can ask anyone at the courthouse, I've been here when it's not a meeting time. So I'm not opposed to being involved. What I'm saying is, to mandate it across the board for 70 employees and, and that be a part of their employment, that's also expecting them to participate. And I don't think that we're gonna have 100% participation rate from the employees in an event.
Can I ask a question, David? Some people are, that we employ are not technologically savvy and could never take an online course. Can you set up a quarterly course where they all come in and you do the online course with them and then they just have to log in and take the notes?
I would have to communicate, I would have to communicate with K-Down to see, and again, since I'm not a certified trainer of that ICS program, the 1, 2, 7, and 8, all the self-online taught courses, let me find out that information, if I can readily train those people with, with a PowerPoint presentation.
You know, like if you, because you're going online, right? So if you projected that up onto a screen and you did everybody at once, I can't remember how those tests are, because that's how we did it.
Back in the day, right.
When you did a group at a time.
Right.
But then maybe you could do a quarterly, and then every new employee that is there in a quarter could come in and you sit down and you throw up the computer screen and.
Well, I'm gonna repeat myself, I'm not opposed to sharing that information or those people being knowledgeable or credentialed. However, when we can't even mandate as a commission that an individual department be educated to a certain level on their own task for which we pay daily, I am not going to add to the burden of their education when we can't prioritize their original purpose to our paycheck. I mean, that's, that's where I stand from the commission standpoint. It has nothing to do with the actual emergency management part of it. It's the, it's the commission's charge to make sure that people are appropriately educated for their job first, and we haven't even gotten that far.
I, I agree with Don. I think that's a more logical way, David, to do it, than if we could do it in some way as groups. I can see that.
Do you think these tests, David, that actually train the individual what to do in a case of emergency?
I, I have a copy of the test, yes, yes.
So it's beneficial to have this training? Sometimes you take all these training courses and you know, a lot of times they're not providing a lot of education. They're just mandated, I know they're a compliance thing to get some certificate, says you've done this, and then now you're qualified for something, but it doesn't really train you for that.
But again, too, like with the Emergency Operations Plan, that, that is updated every five years, and it's gonna be mandated that it be changed February of next year. With that, again, these things were discussed and talked about in there, the LEPC meeting, these things were talked about and discussed in there. And again, for the people that are, that are appointed by the commissioners, you need buy-in. I had sent out an email last week, referenced training for, for two individuals that have volunteered to take some training at the state level as a safety officer. And with that, I don't have county funding to send them. Kansas, K-Down is not sponsoring the class, so they're not offering the lodging. The North Central Incident Management Team is the host agency for this. These two individuals from Lincoln County are not members of the All-Hazard Incident Management Team, so they're not paying for their hotel. It's a four-day class down in Topeka, and these individuals are showing interest in it. I had sent out an email for a response to that, that can the LEPC train, or use, use funding from the LEPC to send these two people to training? For two days is what they're looking at, having their hotel paid for, and they've got other accommodations for these other two days. And again, with that, I sent that information out over a week ago and asked for a response date today, or a response deadline today, and any of the, the assigned LEPC members, I had two responses. You know, so, so again, if.
But LEPC is completely volunteer, right?
You're appointed by the commissioners to be on that panel.
But you're volunteering your time to be involved. So what you're saying is, you'd like those people who are involved to be credentialed to the highest of their capacity.
But these two people aren't even, aren't even involved with the LEPC. They just want to be informed and have that capability for the county.
That's wonderful.
Right.
And we want those type of people to pursue that, for sure. I mean, we want the people who want to be there involved. That's, you know, you don't want to drag people in who don't have an interest. They serve as no asset in any, in any case.
Do we have a requirement from FEMA or someone that we have to have all our employees approved for all this stuff?
Again, the information I was just reading from below the bullet points, NIMS implementation objectives for local, state, and tribal and territorial jurisdictions was released in 2018 and aims to promote consistency in NIMS implementation across the nation. Jurisdictions, jurisdictions, and organizations must achieve or be actively working to achieve all of the NIMS implementation objectives. And again, the county emergency manager shall serve as a primary point of contact and principal coordinator for the implementation of NIMS. With the appointment as the POC, I would request that, and that's where I requested that, that get added into the handbook. But again, with that, if I'm the primary point of contact with that, and when the federal government comes in and audits the state of Kansas and, and lets see your NIMS implementation, and lets see all the people that you have NIMS compliant, then when, when I'm not compliant with that, then we lose our EMPG money or a source of that, or a part of that. You know, so, so again, if, if I'm gonna get caught up and get in trouble as the point of contact and I'm the, I'm the person spearheading this, as, as listed here, then why do I wanna put myself on the front line if, if I'm gonna be liable for the $7,700 that we get bonus money every year for my, for my salary? Again, you know, it's pushback to that. If, if these are things that they're making you do, then, then we ought to be doing them. But if, regardless of.
I'm just going to make a, a point here. It all boils down to the dollar is what is coming out of this discussion. So what you're being asked to do, which you have not identified, because this National Incident Management System standard for incident management has not been described in this report. So do you have that from them?
I have that. I have a list of about 19 pages that, that have the EMPG.
And does any of that say what Randy said, that you have to have a certain percentage of employees in a local government?
Not a percentage, no. But again, all first responders and county employees are required.
Can you bring that to us? Because you didn't bring that to us.
Okay.
Well, I can see first responders, but all county employees, like you gotta have, I, I kind of agree with Alexa, so I don't know.
I mean, I'll use an example.
100% of all the county employees to be compliant.
Yeah, we had an HR person that didn't even live in the county, who was here to do paperwork. I highly doubt that that's the kind of person who doesn't even live in our borders that we're gonna ask to respond to a disaster.
It would be great if you could do everybody, just for their knowledge and so that everybody kind of knows what's going on, but is it required? That's what I'm asking.
Well, this, what he's pointing to here is this paragraph under the five bullet points. One, two, three, four. And it says, "Prior to allocation of any federal preparedness grant awards," again, we're talking about money, "you must ensure and maintain adoption, implementation of NIMS." And he refers to our county resolution that says, this Lincoln County, this 5th day of July 2005, does hereby establish the National Incident Management System as the county standard. But we don't have in front of us what that National Incident Management System standard actually identifies.
I think.
It says it was released in 2018 and aims to promote consistency in NIMS implementation across the nation, but it doesn't, there are no, there's no subsection there that says what it actually says in that paperwork.
In, in the county's resolution? Is that what you're requesting?
No, it's saying, what it's saying is, look, if you want our money, you have to abide by our rules, but you haven't given us those rules. We don't know what they are.
Okay.
So, and, and I understand some of what you're saying is, you can get reimbursable time for those people who are credentialed, who show up and do the work. I get that. So the question is, what percentage of, and more importantly for me, who of our employees? I mean, I can see where you'd be like, thinking that EMS would be on the scene, especially who's ever on duty at that time, who's ever available to come in. So our staffing there may have an interest in it, it's up their alley, as well as they would be the ones reporting. Fire departments would be reporting. What I'm getting at is, you're not gonna have necessarily the secretary from the Highway Department reporting to the tornado scene.
Again, if, if Michael needs her as a scribe in his back pocket, walking around saying, "This road was damaged, this is what happened, this is what I need," again, he's, he's got that scribe, he's not.
And what you're telling me is, the only thing is, if she shows up to, to help at that time, which is not really county time, but if she show, if someone like that shows up to help out of the goodness of their heart, what you're saying is, we can't bill the feds because she doesn't have her ticket. And so that's where I have a problem with it. I'm not willing to mandate something across the board for all the employees to make sure we can get our dime out of it if and when they volunteer to show up.
Okay, okay.
But you still haven't identified what the county is responsible, if we have established NIMS, you haven't identified what our responsibility is in that. Is it 30%? Is it 50%? Is it just you? Is it just, I mean, we have, we have a statutory obligation to at least have identified an emergency management department, whether it's combined with our EMS, or whether it's out of the courthouse, or what, no matter how that department operates for our county, we have a statutory obligation to provide that service. So that's you.
Right.
And so is that the only thing that NIMS requires?
Is me to be pursuing this stuff?
As the point of contact.
Again, I, I don't know, the verbiage, the verbiage in the EMPG contract states some of this.
What's EMPG stand for?
Emergency Management Performance Grant.
Performance Grant, okay.
And again, I'll get a copy to you before you leave today.
And could you find out if it needs, if we have to have 100% of our employees or not, or 50%, or, or only the first responders or volunteers? Like you said, maybe the secretary has to go out there, or would want to. And I guess it doesn't matter, they, they'll be good.
What I'm saying is, we're, when we have our employees on the payroll, they're not mandated to show up to anything. You know, they come to work, they put their hours in, but we're not, now, in his position, if that's part of his job description, that's different. We have 24-hour service down at our EMS station, so we know those people are available. We can't.
In law enforcement and.
Right, right.
You know, and those, and maybe the health department people and.
And that's all, I mean, if it's not on their, in their timeframe or in their capability, then they're not going to be there, is what I'm saying.
Well, they're not obligated to be there, that's the word, obligated. If there's some secretary, not a mean to be.
No, I was just.
If there's some person, that, if you have a tornado, and they're not obligated, then they have to run out there to tornado because they've had this certification.
Right.
Now, they may want to, and all of us may want to help, but that doesn't mean we're obligated, whereas EMS would be, and you probably would be, and law enforcement would be, and that's maybe, I can see we could get 100% would be good here, but.
But it may be required that we have to call the Highway Department and police. We may have to, that's, that's part of the job, is that we make it.
Yeah, I can see the Highway Department, got people.
And that also then entails staff.
Yeah.
You may need staff to run the phone.
I can see the Highway Department, because they're gonna be out and.
And I think as part of his emergency plan, it says that we're all available to be called back to work if needed.
All, the, everybody works for the county.
I think that emergency plan basically says.
Well, isn't that what the LEPC is for? I mean, aren't they volunteering to be that point of contact board that comes after you as the central point of contact?
They're involved with community and being proactive with the Emergency Operations Plan and, and community right-to-know stuff, information, as far as, as updating, updating and looking at each section of the Emergency Operation Plan, and there's 15 different emergency support functions. With that though, we try to review those periodically. Again, are there very often any, any input from any of the agencies? No. Why? You know, and again, I can have a conversation, invite somebody over, do they, do they show up? They may, they may not. Again, the representative from, from the sheriff's office, again, he doesn't have any authoritative change, or, or he can relay that information back to the sheriff's office, but then again, it gets left or lost or whatever happens there, and I shouldn't be picking on the sheriff's office. But again, Deputy Hewin is not the sheriff or the undersheriff, which has authoritative power to make changes. He's just a representative of that agency with, with no power to make a decision. So, again.
So, Don, you were saying that we are essentially, all employees are.
I'm pretty sure in the operation plan that I helped with, now, I haven't been involved in updating the operation plan since the former emergency manager was there, but I believe that he has put us all in his staff. And in past FEMA instances, I don't believe any of my time has ever counted as reimbursed. And in past FEMA instances, I don't believe any of my time has ever counted as reimbursed, reversible, but I think some of the secretary's time. Because as the, let's, let's just say we had a major flood like what Nebraska is experiencing right now. If, if there are repairs that are being made, it takes time to repair those. So when FEMA provides you funding, they, they provide everybody that's working on that, and that would also include the secretary for record keeping.
Okay. Well, then you're-
So it, it's probably important that everybody gets trained, whether or not it's like the very first thing they do before they report to duty is, is where I would question this, is it that necessary?
And are we paying for it?
But I think that's his way of getting it, getting it done is to have the duty-
It'd be part of the appointment, so we would, well, I see what you're saying. So you're saying we should have most of, all the employees and, but maybe not right for a requirement for appointment.
If we're going to list them on our emergency operations plan as being available-
Well, there's the key. If, if that person is, is saying, "I want to be available and I will make my best effort to be available." I mean, if someone's in Canada when this happens, they're not going to be here. But if that person, whoever wants to do secretarial duties, and I'm just using that as an example because they're not the first responder type, okay? If they want to show up to be there, then they can be listed on that plan, and when they show up to do their job, we have a reimbursable employee working at that time.
I, I think when people talk about this, they think about major disaster, but you know, it's just a couple of, the highway department crews had to be called out to barricade roads. That was all part of the plan, and so that expense was able to be recorded as, I mean, there's a factor to how much damage you can have before you can get FEMA funding. And so some of their time was factored into that, so that way, the more expense that we have, the more opportunities we have for federal funding. But of course, all of that is contingent upon it being declared a national disaster as well. Because if it's not declared a disaster by the governor-
It doesn't happen anyhow, regardless of how much effort and time and who's credentialed or not.
Yes.
Well, like I said, I, this is the third time I've said it. I am not opposed to spreading the knowledge or having more people involved, but as far as making an obligation or a mandate across the board for every employee, that needs to be thoroughly discussed.
Okay.
So we, we can look at the, the plan that she's talking about?
The emergency operations plan, uh-huh.
And the EMPG.
The EMPG. Again, I'll get a copy of that before I, before you leave today. I'll get that to you.
Okay, thank you.
Back to my training or things that I've done. February 28th, I attended Critical Incident Stress Management, CISM, training hosted by the North Central Healthcare Coalition. The training is designed as an overview understanding for critical incident stress management, peer support teams, for supervisors and commanding personnel of critical incidents. Ideally, the coalition would like to form a regional CISM response team. The workshop addressed the different types of stress that can be recognized. Critical incident stress is also known as post-traumatic stress, which is not the same as PTSD. Critical incident stress is a normal response of normal people to an abnormal event. And then I have listed examples of critical incidents and then other, other information referencing recognizing stress for the supervisors. Tuesday, March 5th, was the statewide tornado drill. I sent out a message at 9 o'clock, reference the draw on the mass notification system, Civic Ready at 9 o'clock, and then Civic Ready did a notification at 10 o'clock in conjunction with the National Weather Service when they, when they had that designated time set. The previously canceled LEPC tabletop at Rolling Hills, the LEPC members were unable to attend as the day before the exercise. One participant had something come up and was unable to attend. And for CDM, you had to have at least four people, so we would have been one shy. Friday, March 8th, I had previously been appointed the alternate emergency manager for the North Central Kansas Emergency Management Association. As Hannah Stanbaugh, the Salina County Emergency Manager, has resigned her position with the county and is taking a new job as the deputy county administrator, I attended the scheduled meeting in Salina. Attachment four has the agenda of what transpired at that meeting. March 13th, I attended the quarterly fire chiefs meeting in Westfall. Items discussed were on-scene safety, wildland task force requirements, fire tarps to put out vehicle fires, and emergency manager David Doe was notified that there may be some USDA money to help offset the Siren project costs. Lincoln City Fire is wanting to have an exercise in August, reference the tabletop that was conducted in December. Richard Ansel, the chairperson for the repeater board, discussed the balance in the repeater board account, and a motion was made to have Justin Reed go around and check each voter and repeater and look at them and fix any problems which may incur prior to storm season. Tuesday, March 14th, I attended a mass fatality training in Hays. Topics covered: define a mass fatality and list the types of mass fatalities and possible mass fatalities scenarios in your jurisdiction; identify methods of obtaining federal resources; explain the importance of mass fatality response planning; identify potential federal, state, and private resources included in a response plan; describe the ongoing process of mass fatality response planning. Questions that I came back with for ESF-8 partners, which are healthcare, the nursing home, the hospital, EMS, home health agencies, those that are within Lincoln County. Special needs shelters should be separate from your normal shelter location. Do we have that? Where is our backup location if the primary location is compromised? Depending how large your event is, stagger your responders to come in at different times, again, depending on how large or long the event is. A closed incident means you know who is dead on scene. Vetting of resources and volunteer organizations active in disaster, you need to vet those people. The instructor was from Louisiana, and he worked Hurricane Katrina, and he told us from Louisiana alone, there were 13,197 missing people calls reported just for the state of Louisiana, and those calls there were about 910 people that had perished. Contamination of remains is a big issue as to what your responders can get exposed to while working on the scene. 1,200 graves from Katrina were misplaced. A lot of forms that we can possibly add to the emergency operations plan in the event that we have a large event of any kind. With the recent rain and flooding, snow melt and ice melt from the past weeks, March 9 through the 23rd, there's been discussion from counties within the North Central region that are looking at declaring a disaster declaration. For Lincoln County, with recent road damage and overtime that has happened, this may be an eligible expense. Then, if there is a state disaster declaration signed for flooding, then we may be able to ride that as an event, event to help minimize the cost towards Lincoln County. We would first have to meet with county's threshold before we could ask for mitigation assistance. Again, with that, I know there's, there's the potential of flooding in the Atchison and St. Joe's area that's coming towards Kansas City. They're currently evacuating Atchison and St. Joe's. Again, so with that, again, there's a bigger populace, and that may be a driving force as to the state declaring a disaster declaration. And if they do, they may set the parameters from this storm for this event to be included in that. With that, would we want to declare a disaster declaration just to have that already in place if the state does do that? There's no, the disaster declaration is good for 10 days after it's signed. And again, we can keep revisiting that or, or again, we don't have to. That's, that's your call. And I didn't know if that was something we wanted to look at. There are two other exercises going on Lincoln County has this week. There's a tabletop exercise going on March 20th at the Methodist Church from 10 o'clock to 2 o'clock to include primary public health entities and emergency management, with Lincoln, Ellsworth, Russell, and Osborn Counties participating in this exercise. On Saturday, March 23rd, there's a full-scale exercise being conducted in Lincoln on 9th Street in the areas of the county fuel storage facility. This will be an actual people-on-the-ground testing capabilities of different entities within the county. Exercise check-in will be at 9 o'clock at the Lincoln EMS fire station, then the exercise is scheduled to start at 10:00. And the hot wash gathering of information from the exercise should conclude around 3:30. And does the commission have anything for me?
The 23rd is Saturday.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you put all that together? Did you coordinate that?
As far as-
The exercise?
I, I hired a contractor out of Colorado to do that.
And so who else come into that?
Lincoln Fire, Lincoln Rescue, Region 7 hazmat team out of Salina, they're going to be here that day. Russell, Russell EMS with a truck and two participants. Ellsworth EMS with a truck and two participants. Again, one of the, one of the people going to the safety officer class, he's in PIO training also, Public Information Officer training. And the emergency manager from Mitchell County is coming down as he's an all-hazard incident management team-trained PIO. He'll be here working with that individual that day.
Who from our, who from county employees?
Again-
If they're not on the, I mean, if they're on the fire department-
First, first row fire, but then again, there's, there's a, there's an inject in the exercise where they're requesting mutual aid. So any of the outlined fire departments are, are also able to respond for the exercise.
But we don't have our own EMS scheduled or our own sheriff's office scheduled?
Yes, yes, we do. They're, they're a part of the injects in, in the exercise, yes. We're testing core capabilities with them, EMS, Fire, the Lincoln Park Manor and Lincoln County Hospital as to capabilities that those agencies can do, along with USDA 299. They're going to have kids over here, and the superintendent's going to be here.
Not 298?
Yeah.
Just 298?
And again, this, this specific bus out of an accident, I couldn't have, have two buses from two different districts yet. I could, but, but I didn't plan it, so.
Okay.
So. Any other questions?
The one on Wednesday?
Yes, ma'am.
Who's attending that? Our health department?
Health department, the county hospital, the nursing home, and the long-term care, excuse me, short-term care. The agency that just recently moved to Lucas that does home health stuff, they, they got that information, so did EMS. And again, they may or may not. I don't know.
So we don't know if our EMS crew who's on that day is going?
Right. I have no idea. Correct.
Is there a reason or, I mean that-
For?
I guess what I'm getting at is if we're talking about potential, if your suggestion is to mandate all employees have this training, but then when we do have an exercise, we don't know which one of our employees are going, I'm kind of confused.
And again, this is just, this is just a tabletop exercise. Those agencies were, were sent that email. And again, I can't mandate another department head to, to mandate that they go.
Yeah, but we can.
Okay.
I, I guess what I'm saying is this to me is a, is a lot more valuable hands-on experience than mandating a, an online class test. So I guess I'm just questioning the, the prioritization of the experience there. You know, do, since we have, since we're paying for EMS to be on duty on Wednesday from 10:00 to 2:00.
Right.
If they're not called out on their own emergency, that would be something that I'd be more willing to mandate that they attend rather than saying that all employees in the entire county have to take the 100, 700 class. You know what I'm saying? That, that's the kind of thing that I think is a little reversed on the priority list. Even the Saturday one, I mean, we're paying for Saturday EMS, we're paying for Saturday sheriff. I mean, we can't mandate what happens in an elected official's department, but basically what I'm saying is these exercises, you're leaving up to whoever wants to volunteer and participate, but then at the same time asking for a mandate for all the employees to be credentialed, so.
And again, there's, there's agencies that, that participation in the exercise coming up on Saturday, I'm questioning. And again, it's an elected official. Is there buy-in, is there not? Last I heard, last I heard, there was, there was not the requested amount of people that would be on scene. And again, I, I-
You mean at the last exercise?
At, at the full-scale exercise coming up on Saturday, the 23rd.
You mean you haven't had response from people?
Well, I've had interaction with the, one of the representatives of the department. And, and again, the other representative isn't going to be involved.
So this, this clearly describes our conundrum. It, let's just say we have a department that, yes, upon their employment, the first thing they have to do is do their screening and then they have to take this test. What we're basically saying is a year into that scenario, once we have these exercises, they can still opt out of participating and/or opt out of actually coming to the actual disaster for which we are requiring them to be credentialed so that we can get our reimbursement from the federal government. So we need to have a little, I think we need to have a better discussion on that. And like I said, I mean, the EMS department, if we're paying them to be there on Wednesday and Saturday and we know these are going on, that could be definitely part of their required activity for the day as long as they don't have their own emergency to attend to.
Yeah, I understand. I understand.
Let's, yeah, I think that all needs a little more clarification, though. But thank you for putting all this information together.
Yes, ma'am. You know, I'll get a copy of the EMPG grant.
Yes.
And get it-
And, and our plan, our plan.
Our, the operational plan? It's 400, it's a lot of pages, it's-
It's 400 pages for Lincoln County?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Is it an electronic file?
Yes.
Yeah, don't print that out.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
All right.
You ready?
Yes, Michael.
We are, well, not we, but they are currently pouring the bridge OS 87 this morning. Not going too smooth. We, second truck had a form blowout on it, so it's hopefully gotten repaired and moving forward. Trucks are starting to back up already, and that becomes a risk factor.
There's somebody out there.
Oh, yeah, yeah. There's engineering firms testing concrete and everything. K-dots on scene. There's probably 35, 40 people there, so. They are coming off the highway. They're supposed to be having a backing in off the highway. They're supposed to have a flag person in place. I called the sheriff's office and let them know that that was going on. When I left there, I did not see a flag person there, and one truck had already came in on that side, so. When we get done, I'll head back out that way. Received a resignation from an employee, so we are short another. And he was our dozen operator.
I've enjoyed my job as a heavy equipment operator and am thankful for, for the experience I gained here. However, I am pursuing another opportunity that's been offered to me. I've appreciated the support of my coworkers and enjoyed working with everyone. That being said, my resignation is in effect Friday, March 22nd." That would be Dale Lad.
We've received paperwork for our federal fund exchange. This year, looks like we will be getting 90% of $52,187.91. And would you guys like me to sign this or would you like to sign it and send it to the state?
Yep.
It's just a request to exchange. And every year, we turn that in as our ship seal project and then get it moved over to bridge.
Federal funds to be exchanged, $52,187.91. Exchange rate for 2019, 90 cents. State funds for every dollar of federal funds. The state secretary of transportation is hereby requested to make available to the city, county, state funds in exchange for the city, county's allotment of federal funds in the amount stated above. The exchange will be made under the terms and conditions as set forth in the city, county's federal fund exchange master agreement previously executed between the city and county and secretary. This, I'm sorry, I'm saying city or, and, and it's or. This request shall be attached to and become a part of the county's federal funds exchange agreement. I would move to have Michael sign the, oh, shoot, the request to exchange federal funds agreement.
Motion.
Motion on second for the signature. Any further discussion? Those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
None opposed.
Thank you. Usually every year at the end of March, first of April, we go to four 10-hour days. Will we be granted the permission to do that again this year?
Well, it's Monday to Thursday. Tuesday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Barring a disaster.
Do you think we oughta wait until we see what the weather's doing since, I mean, I know there are quite a few places that aren't even graded up from this last fall out?
No, I, I see where you're coming from there, but you know, what we've seen is we, we do become more productive on a 10-hour day than an 8-hour day 'cause it cuts down that lag time of deadheading the motor graders and the trucks and everything else to get a project done. Um, you know, if we need to be working on a Friday, I think that there's a possibility we might have to do that and be utilizing some overtime this year. You know, we're still working our 40 hours a week if it's four 10s or five eights.
You said we do it, when do we start?
Beginning of April.
Would be on the 26th, wouldn't it?
Well, it, it just has to be a full week. It'd be April 1st when we'd be going to it. It doesn't have to change with pay periods. We're still working 40 hours, it's just a.
Do you go out like on, say, like if the weather's bad or if there's a reason that you determine or you'll send out the guys Friday or Saturday if there need to be, like, like when there's snow removal?
Yes.
Like now, Saturday, Sunday, you, you make that call and call your guys up and tell them. And you, we do the same thing now if we had a flood on a Friday and you may have to go out and.
Correct.
Do something.
Barricade or.
So, that's just your call based on the weather or the conditions?
Correct.
So, we'd still be available Friday, Saturday, and Sunday like we are now? You've done that. The commissions have granted this before in other years?
We've done it probably six or seven years now, I'm guessing.
Employees, like, and everything?
For the most part, yes.
Wasn't, wasn't this done way back in the past and then taken away? And wasn't the original concept because they were mostly farmers that?
No, I don't believe so that it was ever taken away and.
Well, I mean, that would've been way before you guys were here. I mean, I, I've talked to some people who were around, you know, for 50 years and I think the concept was a lot of those, a lot of the people that took county jobs were also running their own family farms.
Yeah.
And so, they wanted that to be able to have to.
Extra day off to.
Well, to work their other job.
Right. Three days.
I mean, it's kind of a, yeah.
Well, that may have been to a degree, but.
I mean, I'm saying I think that's where the original concept came from.
A lot of departments across the state do it.
I have no problem. I think it has worked out well, force in the past. I don't either. I don't see a problem.
Thank you.
So, this board's granting me that approval then?
I would grant you the approval. I mean, I want to speak for myself. Yeah, I will. Do we need a motion?
I don't know if we ever have, but.
I'd make a motion to, uh, grant the county highway department to work, uh, four 10-hour days, Monday to Fri- Thursday, right?
Correct.
Until when does that end? October, November?
Oh, end of Sep-, I don't have it with me. September, October. It's about time change.
Then winter, winter you go back to regular 8-hour, 40s, Monday to Friday?
Correct.
As long as you guys are, uh, uh, available Friday, Saturday, if there's a reason to be, you know, for, that's the one thing that.
Yeah.
May be an issue. Otherwise, I'm, I'm for that.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second for a transition from five to four days a week for the highway department, four 10-hour days. Is there, is there any further discussion? Um, I, I would like to point out that we've had a few discrepancies on comp time, overtime, and then what is going to be acceptable across the board as far as policies for the county. So, it's been brought to our attention that in your department, and I, and I don't even know who, but there have been instances where, let's, let's use the example of two.
I would call for a vote. This has nothing to do with.
This has absolutely everything to do with it because we are talking about potentially paying out overtime. Oh, I'll describe it afterward then. Those in favor for the motion, vote aye. Nay? What, the reason why it absolutely applies, Mr. Wallace, is because we're actually offering to pay out overtime for Fridays now. And we've had a discussion where there have been employees on the same day, two motor grader operators go out, reasonably because there have been snow and rain, okay? So, one person comps their time out for the week and the other person takes the overtime and still goes into work, their 40-plus hours. So, how are we going to remedy this since it has absolutely nothing to do with now potentially paying overtime on Fridays?
We have paid very little overtime on Fridays. I'm not sure that we've ever all called them out, have we, or, but, except when it floods and we have to barricade roads.
Correct.
And you would consider that our obligations for this department are full and complete and we may not be potentially needing any further work time to actually accomplish the goals that we should have in place for this particular expense of our budget?
Well, they're still putting in their 40 hours though, but only doing it in four days instead of five. Because now, as long as you're productive in those four days as you would be in five, I don't see an issue. That's the question, that you're gonna productive. But we did have some issues with comp time with, we've heard of and issues, so. As long as everybody's, you know, doing the job and being efficient and out there and productive, that's what I care about.
I'm sorry.
But if you've got your 40 hours in, you're doing it four days. And sometimes I, when you are out there on the job right now, they'll go out, start a job and they have, a lot of them have to drive out graders from Lincoln, right? You go out their way out here. And then that takes hour, hour, 40.
Everybody's got deadhead time.
Right. Well, anyway, I do think sometimes if you're working longer hours in one day, you get more done because you're in the middle of something. And then if it's time clock, oh, it's 3:30, whatever, 4:00, whatever, oh, we gotta go quit. You might just be really getting into doing something productive. So, I think sometimes 10 hours is better. So, uh, that's why I'm kinda for it. As long as we don't have any abuses or like what Alexis was talking about.
Well, my question is what is going to be the policy, either within your department or what is the policy going to be for the county? Because I gave you the example, comp time versus overtime. How are you, how are you making that determination?
I guess some people call it comp time. I guess I don't call it per se comp time. But, you know, if you work a Sunday and then you take some time off on Thursday, Friday, whatever the day of the week it may be, you know, it's, if you've got your 40 hours in, then I guess it's not counted against you's vacation.
So, you're allowing each individual employee to make their own determination on that? I mean, that's what the history says in the books.
Yeah. Time off, yes.
So, then how, so then how do you approve overtime for someone?
We need him to work, we'll put him to work.
Well, no, I, I gave you the example. Two guys go out on the same Sunday because it rains. And one guy takes off Monday and the other guy works the whole week through and he gets that overtime from that Sunday week. How are you differentiate? Why are you allowing one employee to do it one way and the other one to do the other? It specifically says in the handbook, no comp time. You know that.
So, if you work overtime, you're not allowed to take any time off is what you're asking and you'd like to see.
I'm asking, I'm asking what your own polit-, you have your own department here, which is that your discretion?
And if a guy wants to take off, I will let him take off.
So, you've been letting each individual employee determine for themselves?
I don't tell them when they have to take their vacation time. You know, everybody earns the same amount.
I think she's not talking about vacation so much as, like you were saying, if they come in, uh.
It's called comp time because it's called compensation time.
Yeah.
Which means you've already worked four hours on a particular day, so you take off four hours during that week.
Yeah, like you put in 10 on Monday, so like now, you might take, only put in six on Friday. Uh, that's what she thinks. I think you're talking about more than the vacation thing. Somebody says, "I want vacation next Monday." You'll probably grant that, right?
It's because we don't have vacation time. We just have accumulated leave time, so it's PTO. It's paid time off.
But we do, Don. Don't we have a certain amount of vacation days, a certain amount of sick leave time?
No.
It's called leave time and called extended notice time.
Okay.
Right. So, it's, so basically you accumulate for every, so many days that you work, you accumulate so many hours off. It doesn't matter if you're sick. It doesn't matter if it's personal time. It's just paid time.
Paid off.
But comp time is when you've worked additional hours for a particular day in that week. And then you don't work those hours in that same week on a different day. So.
Right.
What we're, what, what the discussion has been is are we just going to continue to allow each individual person to decide when they come to work and when they don't? Because if you want to stay over late because you're in the middle of something, which, I mean, that's your whole justification. Here you go, Mr. Wallace. You wanna know why it pertains. Your whole justification for a four-day work week is so that you can work longer and finish the job or get more done on the particular job on which you're working. Well, that can happen any day of the week. And you could potentially stay to finish or stay that extra hour to, to, to move something to where it needs to be to start the next day. So, then to the next day, do you start an hour later or do you leave an hour earlier? I mean, there has to be something across the board. We can't have you as a department head allowing each individual employee to make up their own rules.
Yes.
I live out in the county and there's plenty of times that I see our motor grader operator blade up at 3 o'clock in the afternoon heading to town in the summer. Is that a 10-hour day? I mean, it's, it's, it's actually laughable because people in my area will, will actually talk to each other and will say, "Oh, yeah, we saw him heading to town at 3 o'clock."
Well, that's where we gotta, if we're gonna do this 10-hour day stuff, we gotta.
It's got.
Have to do 10 hours and no abuses.
What happens, what happens when you have rain on Tuesday? They're sitting in the shop.
Same as we do now.
For 10 hours, getting paid for 10 hours of sitting around. If you're gonna do a four-hour day, why don't you have it floating so some people work on Monday and some people work on Friday?
Because we have to have staff in the office if we have people working.
And she doesn't need it before a day week. She can do a five-day week then. If we're gonna make special exemptions for everyone, we make it across the board.
If she's, if they're working 10 hours a day, she can't work eight hours at the shop.
But she absolutely can.
But why can't she just have regular hours?
Because she would be there and leave before everyone else leaves, two hours earlier.
Why doesn't she just work regular hours?
Administrative hours would be 8:00 to 4:30, Monday through Friday.
So, someone is actually there to take.
And then you could have a rotating team that's Monday through Thursday and Tuesday through Friday. That would be much more appropriate to cover all the bases. And it actually should happen so that on, so that when you have two, when you have a team for your routes, that one of those, one of those people is there on Friday and not on Monday and the other one's there on Monday and not on Friday. That way, if something happens on the main connector roads, that person who's familiar with both routes, you know, they, two motor graders usually work together when they mow or when they have a particular job in their region. So, we have five groups of, you know, two men each and they could easily rotate that off Monday and Friday.
When the biggest voter block in the county are farmers and they don't take days off, they resent the three-day weekend.
Well, whatever. I guess we approved it for, right? For now.
Well, that doesn't mean they can't do four-day weeks rotating some people Monday through Thursday and some people Tuesday through Friday.
What do you think of that, Michael?
I don't think it'll work.
Why is that?
Who's gonna, who's gonna run your support staff? Who's gonna be your mechanics and stuff like that? Do those people just do eight hours a day, four days a week? So, an hour in the morning, an hour in the evening. There's no mechanic, not a secretary, nobody answer the phone. You know, I, it's not set up for it. You know, if you had a staff of 45 people, I think you could potentially work that shift, but it's just not conducive with the number of employees we have and we're bare-bones to begin with.
So, who's getting more done in a 10-hour day than an 8-hour day?
I believe everybody is.
So, then what, so then what you're saying is the people that work on-site at the shop actually need to be there Monday through Friday, working hours, so that anybody at any time who has an issue can get to them. So, that would be your secretary and your mechanics, anybody on-site there. So, then the people that are on the road traveling are the ones that are getting more done in a 10-hour day? Because they're on projects. Who, if you're, if you have someone coming in for oil changes and flat tires, it doesn't matter if it's Monday or Friday or Tuesday or afternoon or first thing in the morning. And if it's gonna sit from Thursday until Monday, what's the difference?
Guess I'm not following what you're saying here.
I'm saying if you're concerned about someone getting more done because they're, they're available and like you said, there's a machinery breakdown or something.
We're putting in our 40 hours a week like we always have. I don't understand what the confusion is.
It's not a confusion. It's a matter of efficiency. So, if you need someone to be in the shop to change tires or change oil, that should actually probably be on Monday through Friday. What you're talking about getting more done in a 10-hour day is someone who's driving a motor grader for an hour to their location where they're going to start their work in the morning. Once you get to the shop, you can start right away. You, there's no reason to have downtime at the shop. You said everybody has deadhead time. What does that mean? Coffee times?
No. Deadhead is if you're running a motor grader and your motor grader's parked right here and you're gonna start blading right here. That's 15 miles that you travel that motor grader without actually getting any work done. You know, you eliminate that once, one day a week, that is considerable.
So, how does that happen in the shop then? Why can't the shop start at their normal hours at 8:00 to 4:30?
Why would they need to when everybody else working four, 10-hour days?
Because there's always work to be done, I'm sure. You're always telling me how behind you are.
They're putting in 40 hours. What's the difference?
8:00 to 4:30, Monday through Friday is very different because then you can have someone working Monday through Friday and not have nobody to be seen on a Friday, just because it's Friday. What is the difference between having a Monday off or a Friday off? I mean, we expect shifts at other departments. We expect the sheriff's department to have a shift. We expect the EMS department to have a shift. I'm not sure why shifts are a bad idea.
Whatever this board grants.
Well, in the past, you've had, in the last several years, you've done just Monday to Thursday, right?
Yes, sir.
10 hours. And you're used to doing that and that's been working, okay?
It's been working, yes.
Well, I think we should continue that for now, but as long as there's no issues with the, you know, everything getting done as much as it would've with, it would've been a five-hour or a five-day, eight-hour shift. That's where I think maybe there's some concerns that. You're only gonna be there four days instead of five, you're gonna, uh, the, the work won't maybe get done as much, but you got, you're 40 hours in and I know what you're saying, so I think, I think it's okay.
Well, what we're saying is anything that happens on Thursday at 3:00 PM is going to wait until Monday morning. Unless it's an emergency, which then you said, okay, make sure you call people out.
Yeah.
But then the reason that they couldn't work on Friday is because the mechanic, you know, would need to be there if you did a rotating shift and he would only be doing Monday through Thursday, but the mechanic won't be there on Friday anyhow. Or Saturday or Sunday. So, that is not an acceptable excuse.
Yeah, but right now, we're, you'd have Friday, but it's the only difference. Right now, we're off Saturday, Sunday, so that same thing applies now.
Now, you're waiting three days to get something done.
Yeah, but you're talking, you're talking a hypothetical scenario, which may not happen that often, so it's not that big a problem.
Well, we know that we have repeat problems because we just had someone in here this morning saying that what was once flagged as a death-trapped pothole now no longer even has a flag in it. So, if we can't even keep up with flagging the areas, let alone fixing them that need fixed, I'm real concerned.
Well, we're just gonna have to do the same work we do in 10 hours in a day for four days as we do for, that's just it. They gotta, productivity and efficiency still needs to be there for the same 40 hours. That's what I say. Now, if we have a problem with that, then we may not be really addressing this issue. It's my opinion.
How are you, how are you going to measure this?
Measure?
Yeah. How are you going to measure that they're getting the same amount done in those?
Well, that's, yeah, well.
I mean, I understand productivity and efficiency, but how are we going to measure?
Well, it's always hard to measure like Michael's type of work because the highway department, they got different jobs every day, different roads to deal with, hauling rock one day, grading one day, bridges, flash flood, mud hole. Uh, you know, you got, he's got a different job every day based on the situation and the weather. So, it's impossible to really measure productivity, I think. But he knows what needs to be done. And I think, well, this, now if we get complaints, that's the way I think. If we get some. If we get complaints from the public that something ain't done, then maybe we have to.
Well, but there are constantly complaints from the public.
Yeah, I, well, yeah, I was gonna have that issue.
No matter what you do.
Yeah.
It's when you have the same complaint in the same area for the same reason over and over, that that means there's no management or oversight of that particular function, whatever's happening there. Whether it's a, an actual problem with the operator or the person who's doing the work, or whether it's an oversight or they don't know what to do and they haven't been instructed what to do. Uh, you know, you can't tell that from the get-go, but.
Yeah, well, we'll have to work on that better, maybe.
Um, speaking of that, since we're on the topic, the one-twentieth road is still a problem and some of the flags that were put in are now gone. I don't know who you have overseeing that, but something needs to be done.
I guess one-twentieth a cult, I guess those springs are opening up and, uh, pretty mud-holy in several places, so maybe we need a sign there to warn the.
Now, the more signs there, I'll have to find out why there's no signs there.
Okay. Because I guess you go over a hill and right there, then it's a dangerous area, so we should probably warn the drivers of that.
And those springs this year are going to be an issue. There's gonna be more of them show up than what we're dealing with now. Um, and it's going to get expensive. We, uh, try to fix on it, you know, uh, I'm not gonna lie, it's not something that I've dealt with a bunch in the past, if hardly at all. But I think what we're gonna have to start doing is digging the roadway out, placing large rock in there and then covering it up. You know? We're taking a four-dollar, four to nine-dollar material that we attempted to fix it with, and we're gonna have to go in with a twenty-eight-dollar material.
That big rock, quartzite rock?
We're gonna have to put oversize in there to get a base underneath that and have a way for the water to get out of there. It's not a problem we created or we neglected, but Mother Nature is giving it to us.
What's the difference in price between the one and a half or the one-inch road stone from APAC, do you know?
Um, probably cons- I mean, as in one inch or one and a half inch road stone?
Yeah, what's the price difference between the two?
I don't know what there is, I don't even know if they offer a one and a half inch road stone, I guess. I mean, I know they have a one and a half inch rock.
Well, that's, that's one of the six.
And there's a difference between the road stone that we're using and a pure rock, you know, and that's why the pure rock gets a lot more expensive. You know, uh, taking the slick out of some gravel, the APAC stuff that has a lot of grizzly and some fines in it hasn't worked great. But fixing these spring areas, it just has not worked.
No, it's not going to work.
No, you'll have to do what you gotta do there.
You know, and honestly, gonna start getting some prices, you know, of finding a true AB three that's gonna help us out, you know, Quartzsite doesn't offer a true AB three, you know, and.
Where are you at on the spending for your gravel budget for the year?
Uh, we've already spent over thirty thousand dollars.
What is your budget?
One hundred.
A hundred?
And it's not gonna be a pleasant year for us on it, there's just no way around it.
Maybe this rain will not be just severe from here on out. Again, in the summer, usually doesn't rain there as much.
And it's rather unique, you know, it's, uh, an entire region that is suffering with the same problem, it's not just Lincoln County.
Yeah.
So.
Um, back to the discussion on comp time, w- we're going to have to make a decision about that and it's going to have to apply to the department, your department, so you would have to relay that message. Um, when we get our time clock system installed, that will give a better indication of the exact hours. And so what the suggestion was, that came to the table was no comp time, they get paid overtime. So if you do end up working on a Sunday, you would get paid overtime for your Sunday, you would put in the rest of your hours that week. If you wanted to take off because you had worked that day and you want time off, then you would use leave time to accomplish that for that particular week. So you'd still get your full pay plus your overtime, but you'd use up leave time as the comp time if you wanted to comp that out. But you'd be, but the pay would be kind of overtime pay for any hours over the forty in that particular week. Is that Sunday through Saturday, Don? Okay.
Don, have you, uh, pursued the, uh, time card, uh, stuff anymore?
Yes. Okay. Michael, what else did you have on your list?
Um, all I have is I'd like an executive session.
For how?
Five minutes.
Five minutes? Uh, non-elected personnel?
Evaluations, non-elected, yes.
Okay, how many evaluations do you have?
None.
Oh, okay. Um, but that's what it's pertaining to?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, I move to enter into an executive session for five minutes for the purpose of discussing employment evaluations. Is this for particular employees or just in general?
General.
What to do for, okay, uh, for the department, for the highway department? Pursuit to KSA seventy-five, forty-three, nineteen, two B. Under one to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel. To reconvene in the basement meeting room of the courthouse with the commission and the public works director. I guess if it's not really a particular person, it might not be executive session material now that I'm thinking about that. I mean, is the question, you're, you're wondering how to do a performance evaluation or you're worried about one that was already done?
I guess it'll pertain to the procedures of how it was intended to be done versus the way that we are now going to be doing it due to employment changing.
Um, so it's, okay, so basically what you're saying is because of the position that is currently void, which is highway department supervisor, or excuse me, road supervisor, is that it?
Road and bridge supervisor.
Road and bridge supervisor, okay. So I'll maintain my motion then, because it is particular to a person, well, I guess he's not employed anymore though, that's not really.
All of the employees though, it pertains to all of them.
It will. And a roundabout win.
I know, but if we're not discussing them. Yeah, I mean, if we're just talking about procedure, that's really open session, if it's procedural. Um, if you're saying that this person did this and he's not employed by us anymore, that's still not executive session. But if you're saying that particular person received this negative remark because blah, blah, blah on their valuation, then that's executive session. Do you understand where I'm going with that? If it's strictly procedural or about someone who is no longer employed with us, it's open session.
I think it's about Michael, though.
About yourself?
Yes.
Okay, so about yourself.
Yeah.
Then we should do an executive session.
If it's about him, yes, but if it's. Right.
So I second it, your motion.
Motion and second for five-minute executive session. All those in favor vote aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Who's present?
None opposed, the public works and the commission.
And HR, please.
Um, um, please add in Don as the acting HR, county clerk. We're just taking a quick.
Break?
Yes, five, five minutes, very less.
Don?
Binky, that's what it is.
I have been smelling that pepper smell.
Uh-huh, do you smell it?
I do, uh-huh.
But, did you kind of clean it maybe?
I don't know, but if it is. Not too long after we started, we got that.
Well, I thought it first was that somebody smelled it, but then I thought.
We should gotta talk to us too.
Yeah, I let, I let David Doe run through my time, we were with him that whole time, so there are a few things we need to go over.
Okay.
Um, and you were gonna update us on the meeting that you had, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, we can do that.
And also, maybe, I was gonna bring up that, we should, uh, sometime maybe, remember, uh, Badcock gave us, like, some bids he got to fix the roof at the nursing home. We probably better venture to pick one of them, cause every time it rains, it leaks.
Weren't we talking to the insurance company about that?
Yeah, we have to wait for insurance.
Oh, we have to wait for them, okay, I was wondering where we were on that.
And I sent him an email, though.
Okay.
I didn't check.
Because that roof needs repair because we get, you get good rain, it's.
Oh, yeah, and the more.
It's only, yeah, it's only gonna damage the inside too more. But, yeah, we have to wait insurance, that's right, I'm sorry, I forgot about that. Was Mr. Lad a blade, blade guy?
Dozer operator.
Dozer, oh.
He would fill in on a blade.
Yeah, I saw him at a blade for me.
So, okay, well, I guess we need to wait for Aljo. Is this your only open position right now?
We got road and bridge supervisor also.
Yes.
So we have two positions.
Okay.
At this moment.
Okay, um, so currently in the highway department, we have two open positions. We had the bulldozer operator resign, and then we also have an opening now in the road and bridge supervisor position. Um, is there an already existing advertisement that we have for either one of those positions? Are we going to, um, how, how much, what percentage of his time was he operating the bulldozer as opposed to doing other things?
Hell, this last year, not a whole lot on the dozer, just based on the weather, but in a typical year, I'd say it's seventy-five percent or more.
But we're advertising it as a heavy equipment operator?
Heavy equipment operator, yes.
Okay. So heavy equipment and supervisor, we need to come up with some ads in the next week to be able to put those out. Um, the discussion in the executive session was based on, um, getting the evaluations done for this particular department. We had set a deadline for the first quarter, we would let them in so that we can assess them over the next quarter and then do merit-based raises starting in the summer at the halfway point for the year. Um, the position that is now open of road and bridge supervisor was basically going to be responsible for turning in the majority of those evaluations and they are not done. The only ones we currently have are for people who have been in before the board to get their raises because of six-month or one-year fulfillment. So we do have those particular evaluations, and we were talking about what are our options to change the evaluation, uh, process for this particular department. So saying that we have maybe three or four in, how many does that leave us then, Michael? About twenty, about twenty-two?
At least. See, that'd be a total of twenty-seven, so twenty-seven minus what's been turned in.
So possibly twenty-three or something around there. Um, were you also going to do the office manager, is that what the position is called there, office manager?
It wasn't intended, but I will now.
So Bob was going to do all of those?
Yes.
Okay, do we have some suggestions from the board on how we're going to pursue continuing, um, the evaluations for this particular department? We have approximately twenty-three or twenty-four.
Well, I suggest we extend the
Deadline?
Time from Michael to, uh, do them. Think you could have another month by the end of April, you think you'd have that?
It depends a lot on what the weather's gonna do.
Well, yeah, I have a weather, that's true.
I mean, you know, if.
Right.
I'm gonna be shorthanded and doing the ju- work of two people to begin with without having this on my shoulders, so.
It's my suggestion with Michael, be set you, set you kind of a goal to do two to three of a week, maybe. Pick the ones that have been there the longest, uh, you know, that, you know, and move that way. I think where we need to get those changed so they are on anniversary dates, so we don't have twenty-three due in one month.
Well, it wasn't due in one month, it was three months. We announced this at the beginning of the year, so we had three months.
I think anniversary date would be good though, too, that spreads them out throughout the whole year. And usually that's, in other businesses I've been at, that's when they would do an evalua- evaluation at the end of your, you know, your hired date to your, like, better year or two, then I think that would.
The only reason it was all at once is because they haven't been done in as long as any of this administration has been in place.
Yeah.
So it was a way to get it, I mean, we announced it at the end of last year because actually we had the health department turn theirs in at the beginning of the year. So we, it was more than three months, but we've had three months knowing that that was gonna be a deadline, so.
Yeah.
Um, and yes, and we can surely do merit raises individually on anniversary dates according to evaluations.
I think, well, that spreads them out for, for Michael or for any administration that's there. You know, depending on when these people come in, then they're spread out, you know, you don't have a, like, right now, twenty-three in a month or three months even. That, you know, and if they're busy, which they have been, that's a lot to, extra paperwork to do for them. But that'd be my suggestion, like Aljo said, maybe on hi- anniversary day. Gotta write with you. Evaluate employees based on their anniversary date and when they hired in.
I can give it a try. It would be, well, and that's all gonna change with employment, too, in the future, you know? Right now, it's, that's with me, but it will change.
Yeah, it'll change. Yeah, you.
Don, would you please add to the agenda for next week, the job description for road, uh, and bridge supervisor, so that we can glance at that and talk about the ad? And I'm, I'm sure we must have a generic heavy equipment operator ad.
I already put something in, um, and it's very generic, but.
Okay.
On these ads, does that include how we can promote from within the highway department that's existing, those people would be eligible also, that are already working?
Well, I mean, I think anyone that's interested can put in an application, no matter what their position is.
Okay, it's not just outside people here, that not working for them.
Correct, normally if somebody's interested in transferring positions, we ask that they apply.
Even if they're already working for the highway department?
Yes.
They'd be, put in an application for that to be, be, okay.
Yeah.
I didn't know the process here. I didn't know the process here, why you did that, okay, thank you.
If, if everybody puts in an application, no matter where they're from, or what their job is, then you just review all the applications at once?
Okay, that's fine.
Mm-hmm.
Just wanted to know how they, how you handled it.
You know, the best thing I can tell you for management advice, Michael, is if you're not gonna be working Fridays with the crews, you could obviously come in by yourself and do some evaluations on Fridays. Paperwork can be done in the office when no one else is around.
I will be working my forty hours.
Well, then, maybe we don't need to extend the deadline, maybe you could use your forty hours this week and next week to get them done. Your salary at position, correct?
That's correct.
And you have obligatory management administrative duties to perform, correct?
But the change in this, what has happened with employment, I believe that is very unrealistic.
But what we found out is that the person who is now no longer employed for us was going to be responsible for all twenty-three or five of these evaluations, and not you. So it would eventually be your job to make sure that that got done, and it looks to me like it hasn't been done, and we're here approaching the end of the month, so you also didn't know that you were doing his evaluation, and he hadn't been doing his job.
I knew I was gonna be doing his evaluation, and him and I had discussed it, and he said he would meet the deadline.
So if he was, if he was going to do all that he does and meet the deadline, I'm a little concerned that you're not thinking that that's possible, or that you don't even think it's possible in a month.
We're also short an employee right now, that I am picking up the slack of that also. I, I don't know why you're hounding me here on this, I just don't understand it. I really don't. You know, it's becoming very evident that you do not like me, and you are just trying to ride me. What's it look like to the rest of the board? I'd like an answer.
I agree with you, Michael.
Is there anything else you'd like to say?
I think the negativity of, of comments towards you have, I've just been astounded today, and I am deeply embarrassed by this commission, and I think that you can't get those evaluations done with some time given, some more time, and I think you'll do a good job of them. And I contend that anniversary dates are good, I think that's the way most employers do it. But I'm ready to move on.
And if it's expected of me to work fifty to sixty hours a week, I'd like a salary that would be compensatory to that. You know, making the two dollars an hour more than my hourly employees, and expected to work fifty hours, I will go back to an hourly employee. Possibly somewhere else.
Michael, I have a response for you. I don't have any personal feelings toward you, I don't even know you personally, but your performance at this table, your lack of planning, and all of the issues that we've had that have gone unresolved under your tutelage, those are where my comments come from. If that's all, you have a good day. Would you like to update us, Randy, first, on your meeting that you had here with the Judicial District?
Yeah, I can, I went last, uh, Wednesday. Well, you had the twelfth Judicial District, uh, Judge, Chief Judge Kim Cudney was here to review, uh, uh, security, like, for courthouse security primarily. She was going all over the different counties she has. She's the district judge over several counties, and anyway, we discussed, uh, you know, how to make us, especially the courthouse secure because of issues, uh, you know, about anybody could come in here, you know, a bad person, and, uh, you know, do us harm, and we are pretty open, which you want to be an open facility, because we are a public facility. But, we were talking about, especially County Attorney's moved up there now, her office and her secretary, and so, uh, there's some concern there, because some of the cases she's had in court, there have been some confrontations with people, and threats, and so forth, so. I think Je- Jennifer had a concern about a little more security for her area, and, uh, but that's where we were, and I was just thinking, I think this Miss Kim Cudney's gonna get back with us on, uh, gonna have an assessment agenda about what she saw, about what they went through here, and maybe how we can secure us a little more, possibly, like, for the Don, and for, like, uh, the Treasurers Office, and different departments here could have, you know, buttons where they could push, if somebody was bad, they could push a button to alert the, uh, law enforcement, alert the other, uh, departments.
We do have those right now, I think.
Do we have that now, Don?
Yes.
Oh, you have that stuff there? Well, they were talking about possibly approving that, anyway, I don't know, I was gonna.
Is it only certain offices?
Well, they were recommending having, like, a committee, and I was thinking, maybe, get, see if we could set up a little committee, just maybe, like, David and you, Don, and maybe, the department people, and maybe law enforcement, see if we could add some security here. Maybe we don't need to, I don't know, I would get the input. I just would like to get the input from, like, you and from everyone else, County Attorney, on if we could approve our security here, or, or what we should do, if anything, you know? That was what this was about, and this one guy was from Fe- or from Homeland Security, and he was saying how vulnerable we are, and we don't have a lot of policies. I could think, bad guy did come in, how would you notify the, uh, other people in the other departments, you know, if I mean, some shooter? You know, so they could get out? Do we have a procedure for that? I don't know. But anyway, that's what we talked about, and that's all I have. Sometime, maybe I'll.
Did you talk about, I mean, I, I, when we brought this up a few months back, I think it was, maybe Judge Cudney was here, I, who did we discuss? Was it Judge Cudney, when we talked about the courtroom, uh, arrangement and all that? We had talked about, uh, metal detectors?
Yeah, they're.
It's an expensive investment, but it's a more of a one-time investment, which would at least do a little bit of screening in that event, you know, I mean, it's supposed to be a non-carry, uh, facility, correct? Don't we have a?
The upstairs, that's.
The third floor.
The sheriff's office, um, warns anybody when they're having.
In the courtroom, if, yeah.
Uh, otherwise.
So we pay an officer to be at the courtroom during hearings?
During, during court.
But on a regular day, basically, there's no screening.
Well, and what, I think this, uh, Judge Cudney's gonna send assessment agenda to all of us, all the different counties, uh, to what, what they found, and I think when they do that, then we can address it, and see if we could, if we want to do any more security here. I think Jennifer would like to see some more up, for her, up there in her area. I don't know about the rest of the courthouse. But anyway, that's all this was about, and maybe when we hear from Judge Cudney on the report, then we go from there.
One of the things that was mentioned a couple months ago, that I thought would be practical, would be if you had a, a, a button release on the back door, so that your office, that there's someone always here, or who, whomever is available to beat someone in. You know, if you know that you're coming to the meeting, or whatever, or you recognize those people, you would let them in. But in the front door, where it would just be open entrance, you would have a, um, well, but there's the basement entrance, too.
Basement, well, that was one.
I forget what we talked about.
That was one thing, they talked about, the, you know, like, the high school, you gotta push a button, they got a camera, they're gonna let you in. This thing, and they, but they know, like, I substitute teach once, well, I know I'm coming.
Right.
And if I don't, I don't know who they allow in or not, because anybody can walk up there and push that door and button, and if they, uh, do they.
They may not always look suspicious.
Well, I don't know if they deny letting somebody in, saying, well, that person doesn't look good, and we don't let them in. I don't know their policy, but they basically let anybody in, and we can't hardly do that here, you'd have to have somebody man a button, people walking in and out. And then, how would you know if, somebody could look, that we may know, and if they're mad, they may have a gun, and it'd be harmful anyway.
So then you basically have to have.
So who would you trust, and who wouldn't you trust?
Well, you have to have metal detectors.
Well, there you go, and, uh, and I don't know if we want to do all that, you know, we were.
But with that, you have to have a man guard to
Yeah.
Take care of checking people in.
If there's a metal detector?
Mm-hmm.
See, and I don't know if we, according to, of course, the Homeland Security guys say we should do that, but we're a little Lincoln County here.
Well, if you're going to have someone man it, why do you have to have someone man it the whole time?
Well, they're just gonna remember the items if they have, if they set off the alarm.
Oh.
Yeah, and I don't know.
So like, if you go to any of the state buildings, you have to walk in there, secure the entrance, and you run your stuff through a conveyor, and you know, they're saying, uh, a metal detector.
Yeah.
Then you have to have yours, your license, too. I think the.
Isn't there, isn't there metal detectors at the high school right there?
Not at the high school, they, they just push a button, let you in, they don't have a metal detector. You could be carrying, carrying a gun in there, there's nobody checking that.
And if you have implants, they'll set off, they set about them, that's why there's a person there, so they can warn you then. And you have to tell them that you have replacements in here, a person's supposed to carry that information with them also.
Well, I'm su- it comes down to how strict do you want to be, how, you know, you, you could make it very stringent type security, where you gotta get key cards maybe to get in, for employees, or stuff like that, or do we want that much, but then you, you know, do you want to eat all that much? That's who the question is.
But if you do all that, when people come to pay taxes, these little farmers are gonna say, oh, forget that, I'm not paying money.
There you go, there you go, and people are not used to that. I like the free.
Nobody wants to debelt before they pay.
Right.
Well, I like the openness.
Take off their overalls.
I like the openness of, I like the openness of where we come and go freely, but if we had an incident here, and somebody got killed, then they'd say, why didn't you have more security? That's the first thing they'd say.
I know, but unfortunately, you can say that every single time.
You can say that everywhere, everywhere and anywhere.
Yeah.
I know, but anyway.
On the sidewalk, which is city-owned property, or, I don't know, it's, that is a very difficult, what were their suggestions?
Well, they didn't really have any, she was just gonna send out an assessment of our, where we looked, and maybe some.
I think he walked around the building.
She walked around with the people, yeah, I didn't walk around with them, I just, but I went to the meeting.
And then they'll prepare a report.
They're gonna do a report, and then, we'd go from there, and.
I don't.
I, 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 maybe we can do some things, you know, I don't know. I wish you maybe talked to Sheriff Weigel, too, maybe he would, you know, he's law enforcement, maybe he'd have good recommendations to.
You could at least narrow the traffic down to one doorway by having some sort of entry, like a key code entry system, or something for employees, where not, where the general public can't just always access all three entrances. I mean, you could at least kind of narrow it down.
And it'd have to be a basement entrance, because it's the only one that's able to get access to.
Well, that was one thing, too.
That's right.
Maybe we have too many entrances, we're, we have the one through the, uh, boiler room here, you know? If we only had a single entrance, then you could.
Yeah.
But, then that wouldn't be good for the people on the back here that want to come in, and, you know, who knows? We'll, we'll just have to see what the evaluation is, go from there, in my opinion.
Okay.
That's all I got on that.
Okay. Um, so we need to determine what we're going to do for interviews for EMS, one, two.
I could give those to you, right?
Is it the EMS interview?
We have, I, seven, I'm, am I counting seven applicants?
I didn't count.
I, I have seven different.
Apparently, I did.
Okay, so, um, before we look at those, which would be executive session, I believe, wouldn't it be? I guess they're not technically employees, though, how do you do that?
I think the, when we did the HR, you did.
Employer-employee, no?
Yeah, the, the number one. Discussing.
Personnel minors and non-elected. Okay, so we do need to go into executive session to at least, um, go through our list of applicants. Prior to that, though, I had had myself on the agenda, we need to have a few discussions. One is, one of the things that I brought up about the Highway Department, our comp time policy. There's already a policy in the handbook, and it's basically, are we going to adhere to that or not? Are we going to enforce it? Because we've neglected it and ignored it, and that doesn't sit well with different department heads requiring either compliance, or as we saw earlier, zero compliance, um, depending on their own personal discretion. So, we need to make a judgment call on that, and then send out a notification to the department head that says, this is what the employee handbook states, and this is what we're going to abide by, and this will be the procedure. Like I explained earlier, if you work on a Sunday for four hours, instead of not coming in on Monday for four hours, you would simply come in and get paid your overtime for Sunday. Or, if you really could not physically come in, then you use your leave time, which you've already gotten compensated for by getting paid overtime, regardless, because if you use your leave time in that week, you're still getting paid overtime for that other time, because your leave time indicates that you're still getting paid for your forty. So, I don't see a problem with the existing policy. I think it just needs to be restated and expressed that it will be enforced. That way, when we do have an HR person coming in, they're not trying to decipher, as the last one had to, you know, individually, according to each person's time card, who got comp time, who got overtime, traded time, whatever you want to call it. PTO is what we have, basically, it's all leave time. So I guess I, what I would like is approval from the Commission to write and issue a statement to the department heads. Um, and it will also go to the elected officials, because the Commission has authority over the payroll and the pay time. And did we check, did we happen to find out about the forty-three hours for the EMS? Was that something that you ever followed up on?
I did not.
Where did we find that out?
Um, it's somewhere fairly recent standards, but how about I email Susan Lee, I kind of forgot about that.
That's okay, I, that just, I just remembered that now.
I emailed Susan Lee and asked her that question. I'm, I'm hoping it was positive that we had this discussion the last time we were audited, which was quite a few years ago, but that doesn't mean there hasn't been some regulation changes.
Okay.
But I think they have to be, like, a fire, so like, Salina Fire Department, they also run the ambulance, uh.
Oh.
But.
So that also brings us to the discussion, before we do any department head applications, of what we are going to do with EMS. Are we going, are we, are we seriously considering employing a part-time director who performs one twenty-four-hour shift, which we know is getting paid sleep time, to perform all of the administrative duties and functions for the department in that one particular day a week? Is that what we're looking at? Because that's what was advertised.
So, do you, it'd be a director plus, plus doing some runtime?
No, it would be, basically, the way it is set up now, the structure that they have, is that the, the director takes one twenty-four-hour shift every week. And so, in that twenty-four-hour shift, yes, you have to respond, because you're one of the two people on call.
You'd be on call, so you could have to be on a run, maybe?
Uh huh, uh huh. But you're there at the, you're at the EMS shed for twenty-four hours a week.
That's it?
That's what the, that's what the position is structured as currently.
Is that what we want?
I do not particularly agree with that, that was decided upon by Mr. Wallace and Mr. Finch. Um, I particularly have the opinion that an administrator of a department needs to be there regularly. I don't see how you can show up in, let's say, ten of those hours are potentially downtime, you know? So for fourteen hours a week, you're actually administering an entire department that has a four-hundred-thousand-dollar budget. To me, it's a little ill, ill-planned.
What would you suggest? Just rate it eight-hour day, forty-day hour a week?
I think that would be appropriate.
And they'd be there, but it'd always be daytime shift, probably, so they wouldn't be there nighttime, would they?
Well, that brings us to the discussion of the twenty-four-hour shift.
Yeah.
You know, for several years now, Lincoln County has been paying out two twenty-four-hour shifts for every single employee. So currently, we have six employees that get eight hours of overtime weekly. You know, there could be some compensation there, if they're not gonna get paid those eight hours of overtime, and they're only going to be working forty, maybe forty-eight on a rotating basis, their hourly wage could go up, you know, depending on how much we can manipulate the.
But it was advertised as a part-time job, right?
It was advertised as a part-time job.
So it wouldn't be forty hours, really, then?
It's tw-. It's twenty-four.
Yeah.
It's twenty-four, but I know that the last person, Brett Kingen, who was in this position, he would work twenty-four and then sometimes would come in for an additional so many hours in a given week, which is understandable. I don't see how you would be doing everything on a regular basis just one day a week. But then again, we're paying out more hours than we budgeted in that particular scenario, so why wouldn't we just have it be a full-time job? Um, who is also available for shifts, I mean, but that, it brings us back to the shift discussion. If you had someone from eight to four thirty every day, you would basically have an eight-hour shift and you could have another person on an eight-hour shift, or you could have a sixteen-hour shift. And then, so you could do two sixteens and an eight, or you could do two sixteens and two eights and get your eight hours of overtime, but that may not need to happen every week. I mean, right now, six people are getting eight hours of overtime every week.
Yeah, that's a lot of money. I wish we could do something where we wouldn't have so much overtime pay. Maybe that's the way it is though, in the EMS world.
Well, it's, it's, it was the choice of the commission to, to structure it that way. I just don't see how we can ask a proper department head to be available for one twenty-four hour shift in a week and oversee all of the things that need done. Or to be accountable in that one day. I mean, it's, it just doesn't seem very efficient.
Then would the, I guess the twenty-four hour shift would be almost all administrative work as a director and not as a regular employee, as a, on the run, huh? But if they're, if they're there, they'd have to be, uh, ready to go out on the run, right?
Yes, the, the point of having them at the shed is so that you can have that response time, so they can be in the ambulance and on the road within.
So that, but the director would be part of that, is what I'm saying.
Yes, that, that would be one of the two people on that particular twenty-four hour shift.
And that director would be on call that whole twenty-four hour shift if needed. So it might be in the middle of doing some administrative.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
The problem is, this department was already given eight hours of guaranteed overtime. So to change that is going to be perceived that we're taking it away.
If you change it, took away, yeah. So they all, everybody now working there assumes they're gonna get it, right?
Well, most people that work these twenty-two, twenty-four hour shifts, they know they're getting eight hours of overtime and they're only gone for two days and two nights a week, so most of them have other jobs. I mean, we experienced that with the conversation we had with Brandon. He schedules his other job.
Yeah.
So that he can have two full-time jobs.
Yeah. I don't know.
I just don't know how you're going to, how, if we bring in someone to oversee this department, how if they're there for one twenty-four hour period, how are they maintaining a rapport with the rest of the employees? How are they overseeing the other employees, the other shifts? They're really not there often enough to know what happened the night before, because they're not coming in the next morning to see the facility or to check other people's work. Um, a problem that we've had is the billing. How do they what?
How do they do evaluations?
Well, that's what I'm saying, they may not have contact with certain employees ever, because they're always on the same twenty-four hour shift with their, their particular partner, you know, I mean, I just don't see how you can lead a department being there for twenty-four hours.
How did we do it with Mr. King? How did he go?
Poorly.
But I mean, did he do a twenty-four hour shift, one day a week?
He was technically an interim, which means they brought him in because the last person was either let go or, or left, and they never hired out that position. They just brought him in to fill in, and he technically was an interim and that never changed. He got his pay raise to perform those administrative duties. But yes, just like we're seeing now, I mean, Brandon has brought more to the table in the last few weeks than we had had brought to the commission table from that department in two years. And that's when all the billing got backed up and, and it was not being overseen, overseen. I mean, basically, the, the department head is going to have to make sure that all the employees are inputting what they did on their runs, which then gets translated and deciphered by the billing company, excuse me, and then we receive those funds back after the bill has been billed out to the insurance companies, et cetera. So, that administrative position needs to know both ends of that. I don't see how you can do that once a week. Especially, I mean, the last numbers we got were one point six calls per day, isn't that what it said? I think when we pick our interviewees, that we may want to ask them if they're available for a full-time position.
Have we talked about too salary, what we're, if they're gonna work this part-time job right now, tentatively, what, you're talking about twenty-four hours? What have we talked about salary on that? You know, obviously, you can't pay them what you would a full-time employee.
Right, we were paying out twenty dollars and now it's twenty and change for twenty-four hours.
And no benefits?
It was not.
No healthcare or nothing?
How would it be if you'd have that person do three eight-hour days? That would give them their twenty-four hours, and they could work with a different employee each time, and that would cut down on that person's twenty-four hour shift also.
Right, so for, for three days out of the week, you would only need one of your two people to do sixteen hours instead of twenty-four.
Right.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I hadn't thought about that, but there's so many combinations you can really do, yeah. So, three eights is twenty-four, and then you would have three sixteens with those days. So if you had Monday, Wednesday, Friday, you would have one person have a twenty-four hour shift with that person, but the other person that comes in when that person is done only does a sixteen-hour shift that day.
And that would cut down on your overtime.
That's a good suggestion, but it doesn't cut down on all the overtime at once.
Some of it though.
Yeah, that's a really good suggestion. And like you said, that would put that person there in the office three times a week.
Right.
Even if it was Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, depending on where they're coming from or what their other obligations are, you'd still be with a different person.
Right, so they could at least evaluate that person that they work with each time.
Mm-hmm. Oh, and if they got creative, they could rotate their own shift.
Right.
Mm-hmm. I like that suggestion. That way, we can keep it part-time for now, if, if we're not counting, if we're not, because we weren't planning on providing benefits, is what the big issue is.
And then eight hours would always be first shift probably.
I would, I would assume it'd be first morning, seven to three or whatever, I don't know. Are they six to six, Dawn? Is that six to six, so, six to two, two thirty or something, I guess? No, it's. We still, is there still a half an hour unpaid lunch for part-time on an eight-hour day? So would it be six to two thirty?
For the highway department?
Well, I'm talking EMS.
No, they don't have a lunch hour.
But if we did, let's say we hired a part-time person to be the department head for now, and they came in three days a week for eight hours, would it be six to two thirty? So that the half-hour lunch is maybe?
Six to two with no, no lunch, we'd pay them for their lunch in case they got called out.
Okay, so six to two.
With, with that service, it's been, you know, it was always deemed that we would pay them for their lunch because of the not having to worry about, you had to have a calculation as to whether or not, how many times a year do they get called out, that you have to come.
I think it would behoove the county to have the person who is administrating the department there more than one day a week. I think that's a dangerous position to put ourselves in, again.
When it's for our applicants, though, I guess they know it's part-time and would only be twenty-four hours a week with no benefits.
We did have that in the ad, however, I think there was a checkbox in the application that you can say, are, are you available for part-time or full-time? So they may indicate that they're available for either or both. So Dawn, we're paying out, was it twenty and some change?
Um, let me go look. To who? To Brett?
The last person was Brett for about two years, a little more maybe. So it would, I think, what I had was twenty and change for, um. So when the budget was configured, it was pretty much just set up to roll over into the same scenario, which was the administrator making the twenty for twenty-four hours a week, depending on how many weeks there were, and then, um, no benefits package for that particular position.
The current director, or the previous director was making twenty-one dollars an hour as of the twenty eighteen resolution. Five dollars if it was to be the director.
Twenty-one even?
Yes.
So we.
Back to the sixteen. And that is with him, them being a paramedic. I don't know what level.
What the credentials are, okay.
I think we're gonna have a hard time finding a director full-time, honestly. I tried to tell anybody that, you know, was a little hesitant about that to apply, not to let that stop them from applying. And then it was a discussion that could be had, but the tax law does not apply to emergency services, I just don't know if that's where you want to raise taxes at for, but you can, you know, add staff as deemed fit for emergency services, which would include the ambulance. But that wouldn't happen until, you know, next year's budget, so you have this year to go through. You guys wanted to hire somebody full-time? You know, you haven't had the HR position the entire time, so there's a couple of ones, we have some positions that we're missing for a little bit, you know.
Mm-hmm.
It's just a matter of how much can the employee benefits fund stand, or does the ambulance service pay for the benefits to get through to the end of the year?
Well, and depending on how we do the scheduling, even taking out one of the six times eight hours of overtime in a week helps to fund that transition. So, you know, and that's not taking away everyone's bread and butter that they're counting on, but it at least reduces our obligation to pay that overtime.
Yeah, when we interview them, we'd have to tell them all this.
Yes.
Before you go into executive session to review those applications, I have just two things. Um, one, Vicky got back with me and measuring where we were at with an eighteen-inch overhang on each side, they don't make laminate quite that big, which would be sixty-four inches. So they cut it down to a sixty-inch, there is a laminate that is that size.
Mm-hmm.
The cost is two thousand two hundred dollars to do that. And if we had three seams and do sixty-four inches, it's twenty-four hundred. I just wonder if it wouldn't be cheaper to find a conference room table.
Oh, yes, no, that's, that's way too, I wasn't thinking, I was thinking like a tenth of that.
I had no idea what things like that cost, so, um.
Well, because it's a special size and all of that, so I'm sure, yeah. Um, no, I would say no to that.
Yeah.
Two thousand dollar tables.
Okay, how about I start looking then for something?
I'll start looking too. Okay.
There surely is something we can order.
Yeah, we can figure something out for that, for sure. Um, I will say before we go into executive session, I am not in favor of hiring someone at twenty to twenty-some dollars an hour for sleep time. So I think that if and when we decide that this position is part-time, especially even full-time, it should be daylight hours to make sure that when we're paying them this amount of money that they're working. I think paying full-price sleep time is a little bit absurd, especially for your administrative duties. I mean, the twenty-four hour shift for the other people who are on call, that's another, that's another scenario. But I don't feel that we should be paying sleep time to an administrator like that. So I would say we, we do need to decide on like three eights or, you know, however we, however many hours is up to us, it's up to thirty-two? Or thirty, before benefits?
Forty, anything over twenty, you have to offer part-time benefits where they could pay a little bit more towards that.
Over twenty? So we, so we are potentially offering part-time because I'm sure it'll be over twenty.
What, what's part-time benefits include?
Um, the state has a, a higher rate in which you pay the premium, and so the employee is required to pay a little bit more.
Health insurance and stuff?
Yeah, we've never had, we haven't had anybody do that for a long time, so I'd have to get back with you what the rate is.
So they'd still be available then for the benefits, regular employee benefits, only not?
At, at a higher.
At a higher premium for them, okay.
Okay, I would entertain a motion for executive session if you want to, I don't know how long we think it'll take to, I, we need to sort through these.
We ought to go through them ourselves first, so, I mean, I, this is the first time I've seen it. You know, I don't know how, how I can discuss anything with you if I haven't looked at them, I guess, you know, I, I, you know, there's quite a little reading on each one of them, I think, so I, I just wonder if it's something that we should.
Well, my concern is that we were going to try to do interviews next week, so we need to know who to call.
I don't think I'm in a, I would be in a position in fifteen minutes to come up with names that I would interview, looking at applications myself. If you are, that's fine.
Um, well, it doesn't have to be fifteen minutes, but there, there is something that we need to express to you that was discussed in executive session when you were not here. So I would still probably move for executive session. If you want to put this off, we could call a special meeting, we could do a meeting over the phone if you wanted to go back into an executive session to determine which ones we want to call and have come. I think it did us a disservice when we hired out the HR position to wait so long between advertising the position and calling back for, for, um, interviews. It really was a disservice to ourselves by doing that. So I don't, I don't suggest that we delay the interview process.
Well, you want to look through these and then what, come up with three, three finalists?
We need to determine, yeah, we need to determine which ones we want to interview.
That was your.
But there is a piece of information we need to relay to him, um, concerning our own personnel, so why don't we just go in for five minutes and then?
I kinda agree with Al Joe though.
I know.
It's hard to review these and give them justice, uh, unless we take a long time to, uh, which is whatever.
A special me, yeah, we can call a special meeting at any time this week and just say, you know, I vote these three, you vote those three, you vote those three, we pick the three, the three or four we want, and then when we have Dawn call them and schedule them. So, would you like to do that then?
Yeah, I think he's right, I think we should.
It's either that or stay here.
I think if we make it, do it quickly here, we may not be given, you know, uh, you know, fairness to all these applicants.
That's fine, it's either do it now or do it later, one or the other. Uh, but I, I am gonna, I move to recess into executive session for five minutes for the purpose of discussing EMS director position pursuant to KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen two B, to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel. To reconvene in the basement meeting room of the courthouse with the commission and acting HR county clerk.
One second.
I have a motion, a second for a five-minute executive session. All those in favor, vote aye. Aye. None opposed. Okay, so what day would you like to call in and have a brief? How, how long do you want to look these over, to make your decision? The other thing we could do is just each of us send our three choices to Dawn.
That's what I was suggesting. Yeah, wait, 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 email our three choices to Dawn.
By what day?
Uh, do you want to do it this week yet?
I think we need to do it in the next two days. Dawn, is that okay with you if we just send you our choices and then you can pick the common denominators of what we do?
About by, uh, Thursday, Al Joe, or Friday?
Let's say by.
I think you need to do it earlier because they have to ask off if they have jobs.
Right, can, can we just do it tomorrow? Can we just send them in by the end of the day tomorrow and then she has Wednesday, Wednesday to look at them?
Sure.
Okay, okay. Okay, so we will each send our three choices in to Dawn tomorrow. She will pick the common three. If there aren't, you might need to call us. Let's see, what else do we have? Have we, do, do you know how many applicants we have for the HR position?
No, I'm texting.
Okay, just so we know, because I think we need to keep that on the schedule coming.
Next week, Dawn, if you bring, just bring the, bring the things next week to us, the.
Applications?
Yeah.
Are we done taking them?
Because we need to, we'll need to look over them anyway.
I think we still have the ads running.
Okay, that's fine.
Somebody picked up an application today, so.
Okay, okay. And the position of filling the Rogan Bridge supervisor, do we, we don't have an ad for that, so we need to construct one. You are gonna bring the job description, we can put that on Monday's agenda. And then you're just running the one for the heavy equipment operator because we already have that ready to go. And was there another?
And I, I did add in that this person primarily works on the dozer, just because maybe there might be somebody that's, ooh, I.
Would rather.
I'd do that, yeah, so. Kind of just draws more attention, but it does say that they are required to do other things, but.
Right. Okay, and so.
I have a question, when Mr. Hal was out before, with certain time, we had another employee there kind of stepped up to help out, right?
That was John Walton, Johnny Walton, I think he goes by Johnny.
I wonder if we should almost now request him to help Michael out now, because Michael doesn't.
He, he's, he's got a road, I mean, he's got a road degree.
He's got road.
I mean, you know, he's not gonna be available.
He won't be available, he's full-time blade guy.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, well, I just wondered, I know he's, because various people speak highly of him unheard, and I was thinking that he could. He could maybe.
He, he's really concerned about getting that done, I know, I talked to him this week.
Okay. Maybe if he was salary, he'd put in more than forty hours a week. So. That brings that to a close about how many positions we need to address right now, including finding the HR person. Dawn, did you have something you wanted to give us about the time clock?
No, not yet.
Okay.
Although I can tell you that Comtech thinks that it will cost somewhere around a thousand dollars.
A year.
To program, and then they will not charge us after that, it will become part of.
Oh.
But that, a thousand dollars is what they're thinking for hour-wise, and then after that it'll just become part of our annual software maintenance. But that will get us a couple of months to work out the bugs and things like that, so.
Great.
Tweaks with programming. I had sent the gentleman email about, you know, training and setup, but he called this morning, but I didn't have time because it was right before the meeting, so I'll call him back and visit with him some more, but we'll go ahead and get the equipment ordered at least, and then we'll go from there. So I did a multi-ad at this time, instead of a single. We'll have a part-time transportation bus driver, add a dis, full-time dispatcher, a full-time equipment operator, and maybe that was it.
Or did we lose our part-time bus driver?
Yes. He resigned last week, and I think this week is his last week.
Is there a letter of resignation?
Not that I know of. I was just called by the bus board chairperson and asked if I would, that you would add for a part-time bus driver. So that's what I'm doing.
Okay, and thank you for sending out our mailer and adding that additional information. Very nice.
Really good. I will tell you that took a lot more time than I anticipated, and if you and David can knock those out in two hours, you guys need to go into business.
I'll come help you next time.
Because that's, it is a lot of work, but if you choose or want to do that, I would say like a three, three-week window by the time we start designing to printing, because the printing actually took a lot longer than what I had anticipated.
Okay.
But you're wel- welcome.
Yes.
And, you know, we'll see how the public responds.
Uh, yeah, I, I've gotten at least some comments that it's, they're glad to be updated, not about their opinion of the update one way or another. Did you want to say something today? Did you come to?
Me?
Yeah.
Oh, about nursing home?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right, get this out.
Yeah, but yeah, I think people were at least glad to see some correspondence from us, regardless of what they think about the situation, so.
My opinion comes almost solely from being a consumer, the importance of a nursing home, a good nursing home in the area. I saw in the paper where it was suggested that, you know, if there isn't one here, you can just take your loved one to a nearby nursing home, that certainly isn't a good situation. Wherever the resident go, the family is gonna go, that's where they're gonna do their shopping, their, of all different kinds of things, buy their gas there. I did twenty-one years of it, and I shopped and moved my patronage around wherever ours was. It only makes sense to do it, you're already there. But I do think this nursing home needs to be good to its residents who live there, and of course, to the community. That's hard to come up with, and I don't have any answers for that. That I really, really, really want to see this nursing home prosper, be here. Have you called any companies around, I'm sure you have, to find out their interest in buying it? How many hundred? No? No? I would suggest starting with Good Samaritan, it's a nonprofit, and they do really good work.
Do you have any input from all of those years, that's longer than the average nursing home experience? Do you have any input as far as, were you aware of any facilities being run by particular? I mean, Good Samaritan's pretty big, but, you know, a, a bigger management firm versus someone local with a small business? I mean, do you have any kind of input as far as what you've experienced with that?
You know, right now, my memory fails me, which is bad, but I don't have any experience with a hospital supporting a nursing home or any part to it.
They were all separate entities?
I think so, I think so. But I'm worried about Lincoln County, I think we're different. I don't know if a business could make it, just, just a business, without some subsidy and where or how, I, I'm not in on that kind of stuff. I think we would need to support the business, not run it, not manage it, but some sort of a subsidy, I think, is gonna be important.
Well, and I think what we tried to touch on in that newsletter was the relationship between the county and the people who have been the, the tenants. It's just been on a certain path, and it's mostly, you know, paying for the nuts and bolts of certain things to happen, but within the lease itself, there's never been any protection for the county, at least not the current lease. So that concerns me, I think that can all be revamped. You know, if, if we're not going to sell it outright, we have not discussed the option of selling it, but that may not come about until the discussion of reaching out to these particular management firms, who would even be interested in managing it? But if they can't manage it without a subsidy, they're not gonna be interested in purchasing. I mean, it kind of comes full circle as far as the conversation. Were you gonna say something?
Oh, I was just gonna talk about the flyer.
Oh. There are several firms that own thirty, forty different locations that are smaller and not just, you know, huge outfits, and that's who we're looking at right now. And I can't say that we have any particular interest. In fact, we need to talk to Mr. Hay. So, and did Jennifer ever talk about getting back on the schedule? Because she was gonna come talk to us last week and was sick.
Um, yes, I don't think that she has.
Do you mind contacting her and telling her there are two topics then that she would need to address with us? It would be the nursing home with Mr. Hay, any further correspondence or? Because we were basically kind of, we've been in contact with this attorney out of Topeka and.
And origin name.
Yeah, and, and a lot of that conversation revolves around what's going to happen with the state allowing any other entity to be licensed to operate out of that particular building. You know, we were given in the beginning when we started this process and there was a committee formed, we were given so many different scenarios about all the what-ifs, and a lot of it was fear-mongering about saying that our building is not ever going to comply, they'll just shut you down. That's not what the state wants to do, they have nowhere to necessarily put any of those people, and they don't want to take over management any more than they have already had to do last year. So that has been a process to just figure out where they are, and now there's been a change in the administration because the governor gets to select the head of K-Dads, which, has that even happened yet? Does anyone know? I don't know that.
I don't either.
So Secretary Keck, is that his name, I think, was the last head of K-Dads, and he's no longer there. So now that person who we were talking to with our attorney is gone, so when, when the new person is appointed, or maybe has just recently been appointed, we have to establish a relationship there, but that's all been happening through the attorney, not necessarily the board. That's the licensing process. As far as marketing it, we can be doing that, and we just have not. I think we.
It'd be nice to know what you have before you try to market it.
That's, well, and that's part of the problem. We can't market something that we aren't able to acquire a license for.
That's right. I have heard that Wilson Nursing Home is also struggling. If any company would be willing to take on two struggling places, maybe they could make something of it.
Didn't the state take them over?
Yes, that.
Oh, they did.
Well, the one in Wilson was part of that, it was called Skyline Corporation, and they're the ones that lost, I believe it was eighteen or, I can't remember the number, in Kansas all at one time. They were new investors, they'd only been in the business for a year, and they, the state filed an injunction to, what's the word? To reclaim, you know, they, they basically took ownership of their license and so took it from the.
Where did it happen?
And I think, and I don't know how they're marketing, I mean, that's part of the, that's part of the, what we haven't gotten out of the State Department. How are they marketing the places that they now have control over, that they're working the finances for, to the open market for sale? I mean, who are, you know, I don't know who they're going through, if they're using brokers, or if they have. I know right now they just have temporary management firms. So, but some of those firms are buying, I was in contact with two, and one in particular, I mean, they do look to buy, but they also do contracts to manage, so probably depending on how stable it is or what they see as the future projection for that area is whether or not they would offer to actually run it.
Can you market it with Grace being there? Or do you have to wait till he gets out, till his lease is up, or?
Well, there's, there's the, the final determination. When the lease is up, it's at our discretion as to whether or not we continue that. And we're already past the halfway point on the three years.
Have you ever talked to Grace himself lately to see if he still wanna operate it? I mean, he's there, operating now, he would have to get rid of the license, I mean, really have, or he said that's not workable.
Well, that's, that's the problem that we're in right now, is that the census is down in the twenties. The bills keep flowing in for things that they should be paying for themselves, according to how I read the lease. Of course, you know, you can argue that lease because it's so flimsy. I don't think it's being efficiently managed right now. He is, Grace is the management company.
Right, right, and it's there. Well, I don't think we, the issue, I think, I think their care is still good for the residents. Now, the, the fear is the employees and the residents are worried that we're gonna shut it down and all this and that, and that's the whole big fear that I've seen since I've been involved with this. And because of that instability of that fear, because don't, we don't, that's why we sent out our newsletter. If we could maybe make a deal with him and, and, you never know, I don't, maybe not, I don't know.
I mean, are you saying?
He got some stability back, then the residents would be happy, employees would be happy because they know they're gonna get laid off or fired tomorrow, and the residents may have to move out next month. You know, that's, that's the whole issue here. I don't, we already have an operator, Mr. Grace. We wouldn't have to do all this stuff if we could work with him, or is that impossible?
I'm ask, I guess my question is if he's the op, he's, he signed a three-year lease.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're not the ones that wanted out, he is.
But maybe he'll change his mind. I've, uh, people tell me that he thinks he would possibly be willing to still operate it. I don't know that for sure, but I've heard that.
Well, okay, so you weren't here for some of this, but we had gotten multiple reports from him and those who were advocating to take it over from him, that he, he's claiming financial destitution up there. He's basically claiming that in the year and a half that he's been there, he has gotten himself in the hole of probably three-quarters of a million dollars. So I'm not sure why he's still interested in running it. It sounds to me like what you're saying is when he's there at the facility, he wants to run it, but when he sends information to the commission, he's a million dollars in debt and he needs bailout.
So he's second to that, said that for sure. Okay, so maybe he doesn't want to now run it. But I was just curious if we could, you know, we wouldn't have to go through all this hassle of trying to look for a new management and get, get the license and buy him out, you know, it's a mess. And that's what I'm just saying, if we could discuss it with him, then maybe.
Well, what you're saying is basically what's happening. He is, he is there.
Yeah, he's running it now.
He is there, and we are here.
Yeah.
But we've had requests to pay his bills, and not just these bills for flushing toilets, et cetera. I'm talking about.
Accounts payable and stuff?
Yes.
Yeah, I know, he's behind on that, and also a rent, I realize that.
He hasn't paid rent at all for over a year.
Yeah, I know. But anyway, I was just curious on that, because that would sure be fix our problem if we could get along with him if that's possible and have him continue to run it. Maybe that isn't, but I think maybe we should have some discussion with him on it.
It sounds more like kicking the can down the road.
Yeah, but look, look, it's gonna be, but changing away from it's extremely difficult. A lot of places do not want to take our rest on the nursing home over because they're gonna say, if he wants out, why do we want to take it? Why, we have only twenty, we have only like twenty-eight residents up there. We're, a lot of companies don't want to take that over. It's gonna be tough to get a management outfit to take us, and if we do, we're gonna have to pay the subsidy. We're paying the subsidy, we'll probably have to pay more subsidy.
But why do we want to keep somebody in there that's running it down?
Well, I don't know, I, I, you might be right, I don't know if he's running it down.
I mean, you know, no, I mean, what I'm talking is running us in the hole deeper and deeper.
And when the reputation gets, it's bad, it probably is already.
Oh, yeah.
Nobody's gonna want to buy it, nobody's gonna want to live there.
Most folks I've talked to think that he's a shakedown artist, so.
Probably operates other places.
No, he doesn't, no, he doesn't.
Well, yeah, Smith Center, I think he's built a new place.
He likes to build stuff, and then he, he makes his money building stuff.
When he came to sign the lease with Lincoln County, his credentials consisted of him owning and operating a nursing home in Missouri. Shortly after he made the purchase from Kristen Robinson, that the commission was not made aware of prior to it happening, he sold the facility, and I don't know how long he owned that facility in Missouri. But basically what I'm saying is he potentially bought and sold one and came and bought and now is proposing to sell this one, but he wants to sell it to us, and he wants to sell it to us for the price of his accounts payable. He's not trying to sell it to us as a, as a, as a, as a productive business. He's trying to say, I owe this much money on this business, will you buy it for me, from me, for this money that I owe? That's, and you weren't here, Mr. Wallace, could maybe you could more thoroughly explain what the propositions were? Because we've had several from Mr. Grace.
Basically said, what you?
Well, he wants, let's, I'm sorry, I'll turn this off.
He basically has not paid his bills since he's been running it, and so now that his bills are all racked up and behind, he wants us to pay him the amount of money that he owes, and included in those bills that aren't paid are his own management fees, according to the last records that he provided, so.
Well, anyway, I was just curious to ask him about this, because what we're doing now is we're having to do, we're gonna have to find the management outfit, take it over, and I think, hopefully we don't, I don't know, but. But, and then we gotta get the license from Grace, we're gonna have to. If we, we're gonna have to get his license, or otherwise if we had to go to the state and get a new one, we'd almost have to totally remodel that whole nursing home because it wouldn't be up to code, and that's what I've understood.
Well, that's some of the fear-mongering that's been done, I don't know that that's.
You don't think that's true?
No, because it's at the sole discretion of the secretary of the State Department of K-Dads to, to award a license.
Well, if that's the case, then. Well, if that's the case, then we should try to, uh, see if we can do that. But, but if we have to tear down that nursing home and rebuild it for millions of dollars, it ain't worth it.
No, it's not, that's not gonna be able to happen.
So, so it looks like to me, we almost have to get Mr. Grace a license. And that's, but you're saying that ain't necessarily true.
Right, because it's not, he, he may have a license with the state, but that's at the state's discretion to have that agreement with him. The state can also choose to have a new agreement with us as a licensed one.
But it, but-
We don't have to necessarily purchase the one that exists. It's not a tangible commodity. It's, it's a relationship contract.
But, uh, but, but I heard if we do get the new state license, then we'd have to comply with new rules and regulations and building codes. And that is the fear that our old building wouldn't do that.
That is some of the fear mongering, but I will remind you that that conversation came from a panel that was put together under the organization of Mr. Keck as the secretary of K Dads, who is now no longer there. And so all of that information came from people who are in his department, who have had prior relationships with Mr. Grace out in Topeka on other projects. So it's not necessarily a rule or a law. It was more or less a code of expectation by the, yeah.
But, but didn't we talk to Mr. Hay, our attorney and that? I thought they were saying we would almost have to get Grace's license. Didn't they at one time say that? Maybe not, I don't know.
Well, that's on the table. That is on the table as an offer, which was offered by Mr. Grace himself. But with his license, according to what I've read in his proposals, with his license, he's also asking for the price that is the equivalent of all of his back owed bills to himself and others. So in other words, we're not just purchasing the license. He wants, he wants a buyout, a bailout for lack of a better term.
Either the stock or the assets, we was talking about, right? Yeah, okay. Well, I'm just curious on all this.
Well, while we're on this topic, I'll just update you. I did go to the Lincoln City meeting, um, last week. And I just basically asked a few questions about what their status is with their contract with Mr. Grace. So the contract that they had written up, and they did pay attorneys to do that, they indicated, no one had ever really fulfilled any obligations in the contract. And the dates have expired on that particular contract. So as it sits right now, there is nothing in writing that's in agreement that the dates are all, you know, from here forward with Mr. Grace and the city. However, they did not indicate that they would never enter into a contract with him again. So basically what the last contract said is that the open lots that are here on the east side of town, that Mr. Grace, was it three lots, I believe, I can't remember how many, that he would be able to develop them and the city was going to get bonds to back the project. And he was, his obligation was to initiate the process with a ten dollar check and a shovel full of dirt kind of thing. But that did not happen and the dates that were set forth in that contract expired. So currently there's nothing on the table. And that doesn't mean that they won't, you know, renew a contract or amend that particular contract and put it on the table again. But I was not sure of whether it was expired or not. So they didn't seem to indicate that they were having any ongoing conversations about pursuing that with Mr. Grace.
So that's over with.
For now, maybe.
I don't understand the legality and how all this works, but it sounds to me like Mr. Grace has breached his contract with us. And there should be some reward for that, for us if we can, do we have to still release him? Does he still have to pay us money?
At this point, it would be up to the county attorney to actually file suit against him for the monies owed to the county. And we do have legitimate monies owed to the county. Um, we did receive some correspondence back and forth with some attorneys over that subject. So it's debatable, but nothing is settled until you actually take it to the courtroom. So that would be on our county attorney. We've been working under her advice that is in conjunction with, she's, the attorneys that we hired out of Topeka, that she's been in correspondence with, and we've not necessarily taken any direct action. I would say that the commission's next point of action should be to compile an RFP and to, a request for proposal, which would basically be marketing our facility, um, in, in any or all ways and just see what kind of response we get. Because then you can open a dialogue with a particular company who may be interested.
And if we break contract with him, we certainly would need a plan in place. We can't just say it's over.
Well, and that's part of the-
So the marketing would have to be there.
Right, and that is part of the problem with the licensing. We've been advised by the attorney group that we can't necessarily just acquire a license to us because we are not professionals in that field. There, the state is not going to say, oh, yes, you three commissioners look great, you know, here you have a nursing home license. What we need to do is have a relationship with someone who is a professional in that field so that when we apply for this license, that they will see that we are responsibly going to handle that. And I think the way that I've found out other counties do it, you can have more than one party on the license. So basically you're issuing a temporary contract of doing business with the state. Because the state is the one that's going to pay the Medicaid reimbursements. The state pays some of the Medicare stuff. And then you have individual contracts with your residents for them to pay their bills as well. But to get the license for operation, you're developing a rapport with that state agency, which is K Dads. And if you're not the management firm, you can be listed on there because technically we're the owner of the building. So we can still be on the license, but the state knows that we're not just up there operating it. I'm not the CEO, CFO and district manager of, you know, just on the commission. There's an actual management company handling it. It's very common.
Yeah.
I, I brought a, just a generic RFP to the table right before Mr. Grace had purchased the property or when he was in the process of it. I think that's where we should start over, is, you know, get our facts straight. Have a list of this is our facility, these are the dimensions, these are the possible beds and rooms. These are the rooms that have private baths, these are, these are those that don't. These are the remodeling repairs that we've done. You know, this is our estimated approximate income based on what our daily compensation is for Medicaid and what our room rates are and what our assisted living consists of. I think we need to get that all out there on a piece of paper for the purpose of marketing and open up some conversations with a few of these bigger firms that do this. Because there are companies that do this. I actually, I, maybe you weren't here, but I brought it up. I spoke with, I wanna say Cherry Hill is the name. Cherry Manor, Cherry Hill Manor. Anyhow, it's near Great Bend. And the woman, she ran it, her parents ran it and her son was preparing to take it over. And Mr. Grace came in and got involved on the scene. And she's told me that she spent thousands of dollars in litigation to get him uninvolved. So then recently she actually sold her facility and the place that bought it sent in a temporary administrator, basically to come and reformulate their structure. And she, and I spoke to that woman, the temporary manager there, administrator. She will not be staying. Her sole purpose is to come in, change the structure and leave. And they will bring in a new administrator who will then function under that reorganization. But they kept the employees. Does that make sense? I think that's what we're looking at, that kind of a format, in my mind anyhow.
I think that sounds workable.
And all of the little things that a management company can provide are things that we know nothing about as far as the, um, the programming systems for tracking all the patient care and doing the billing and things like that. I mean, that would hopefully come with the management company. The problem is we don't know what that's going to cost us. Because since we own the building, we'll be paying the management company, at least until we, you know.
We'll probably have to pay a subsidy to them to, because I don't think they'll make money, uh, not initially.
And I think that's where the public opinion comes in.
Yeah.
In, in my point of view. You know, if everyone's willing to keep the hundred and twenty thousand dollars on the line item for the regular general fund, that's one thing. But if people are not willing to triple that to a four hundred thousand dollar subsidy every year because someone comes in and says they can't make it work either, then where do you, where do you find that balance, you know?
Well, like now, we have less than thirty residents. I think there's twenty-eight up there. I was just up there talking to them the other day and, uh, then we have, uh, um, half of them are like Medicaid or a little less than half. They're not paying full rate, which is like eight hundred a month, I think, whereas your full rate's like six, seven thousand a month.
The Medicaid payments come in at like a hundred and eighty-three dollars a day.
Something like that.
And, but yes, and then I-
But, so they're not paying, so they're, and they were, they had been behind too, uh, paid like months later.
Yes.
That's been getting them in cash flow issue up here. Anyway, that's where, because of the Medicaid, you're not getting the money input, income as you would if, they were all private pay.
Right, but a, but a corporate investor goes into a situation like that knowing that you may have to float front floats.
Well, they're gonna look at the books, I know that. But that's why it may be difficult to find someone because it maybe doesn't, if you're not gonna, why would you bring, take this over if you're not gonna make income out of it? Right? There's no reason. That's where we're at.
I know there have been residents turned away who wanted to live there. And you're right on the, uh, private pay and the Medicaid.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, I don't know how you go about, uh, marketing residents, saying, would you like to come here? But there's surely a way to propose, anyway, try to, try to get the private people in there if you can.
The question remains, if Mr. Grace is a savvy operator, which many people believe he is, why would he have bought the business from Kristen Robinson if it was a clunker? Why would he?
I don't know. That's a good question.
Yeah.
Well, we know.
He didn't. It's not a clunker. He did spin off the, the most valuable portion of the nursing home. Yeah. He spun that off, but there's no reason why we can't get that back. Not by his-
No, it's just a matter of clientele.
Yeah, it's a matter of clientele. There's no reason why we can't get that back, get that business back. Not buy it from him, but create our own. It's not a clunker. And there's an awful lot of people saying a lot of stuff that's not based on any kind of research. So I would like it if the commission would actually, you know, the internet's there. If you don't have a computer at home, you can sure use the library. Do some independent research on this. Stop letting it be people telling you stuff. If you can't, if you can't find that information on your own, it's not real.
I've been interested in some of the private nursing homes. If I could remember anything, I could tell you a few, but I know there's some isolated, really nice nursing homes that I hear about. Usually the stuff I hear that's good is probably true. But nice. I would be interested on how do they do it? How do they make money?
If you have more residents, a lot of them have-
Get more residents. I'd like to-
If you have forty residents or, a lot of them have, the bigger ones have a hundred. Then they make money because, because more, you know, it's workable. But when you have fewer residents and you have a lot of overhead, then it's more expensive. That's what it comes down to.
There's no overhead. You're not paying any rent.
No, well, we do. I mean, the county does.
There's no, there's no insurance, there's no taxes. Yeah, yeah. When the for-profit CEO takes his cut first, then the person on the very bottom doesn't.
Well, the other thing that's happened recently, and they've lost a lot of local employees. And so they are, they are interchanging that with, um, what's it called, nursing staff? Like staffing agency nursing, agency nursing? And that's more expensive. Because not only are you paying the person who's doing the work, you're paying the company who's-
Setting them up.
Right.
Some of them are very good, but most of them, a lot of them are there to do their job. They go home and it's over.
It's not the same as a personal relationship where you-
Exactly.
Yeah. And, and we have lost some local employees with the current management that's up there. I mean, there's been a lot of back and forth over that.
Yeah.
Which could all come back. I mean,
Absolutely.
There are probably people that would want their job. In fact, I know that, but I think we need to start over on paper with, you know, what are the assets there that we have? Which includes the people that live there, not just the tangibles there. And then, you know, that's what we're marketing because we want someone to make a balance out of it. And it does seem very possible, even if it included a minor subsidy. I mean-
The, the advantage of using a management company is they're already paying their CEO. They're already paying their, their, the, the staff who, who takes care of all the paperwork. And that's one of the most expensive things up there is that. And then the leftover money is to pay the staff who's actually-
And then they also have the expertise to capitalize on the, the, the greater Medicaid reimbursements and things like that. They have the resources to be able to do that, whereas I don't think that's been something that's been the emphasis of the current or prior management up there for a while. And one of the things that happened, if I'm, if my history lesson was correct, when Kristen, who is now the administrator but the prior owner, when she was there, she at some point took a quite a few of the rooms who were double occupancy and took them down to single occupancy. So that reduces the overall amount of income, which, and I'm not faulting the, the theory there. I mean, maybe your overall price, you know, that you can charge goes up when you have it, single rooms. But it still decreases, it definitely decreases your gross income, I mean.
We were there before and we were there after. It definitely went down when Kristen came. It's all I'm most able now.
Okay. So I guess I will try to bring something to the table in writing, compiling what I know and with some of the information that I have, and then maybe we can work on contacting. I, would you be opposed to me reaching out to some of these companies that I've already talked to and having them speak with the commission? If we could do a phone-
For, for a management company to turn it over? Not selling the facility outright?
No, I mean, I, I don't even think that can be a discussion until we talk about- Well, yeah, there has to be some sort of transition with where we are right currently as far as the licensing. And we can't get our own name on a license until we have a company that's willing to work with us and get their name on the license too. So I think that's where we are momentarily. Are you opposed to me having those? There are two companies I can think of right now, and I think there were a couple more that the attorneys gave us names of. But could I have them, could I schedule like a conference call where they could call in and we could have a brief discussion? I don't want to be just in correspondence with them myself. I want them to talk to the board.
Be fine with me. I'll do it.
So maybe I'll look to like the first week or two in April.
Yeah, contact someone. We can talk to them.
Okay.
Do you, have, have you or, like, do you want this license? Could we contact K, what's K Dads, to, about our situation?
Yes, that's what we've been paying the attorney for.
Well, they seem not to know, the last time I heard, right?
Yeah, do we have a total bill on that, Dawn? Do you have any idea of what we paid out?
I don't.
Well, we, that's, because that's an important point you brought up. If we could get a license from the state when we don't need Grace's, then that's a big deal. Because that's kind of what we're stuck with. We thought we was, I was, I thought that's what we have to do. If you're saying that we don't have to upgrade our facility and spend a million bucks for a new license, well, then that'd be okay.
Right.
If that's possible.
Right.
And that, I don't know who we talk to. Our attorneys, I guess. We should talk to them again then, huh?
Well, I think we need to bring Jennifer in and we need to know if she's had any more correspondence with Mr. Hay. We need to be able to talk to him again as far as getting any updates on the new administration through K Dads. But there's no reason the three of us can't call as well and just-
No.
I mean, I spoke to several people who worked under Mr. Keck and every single one of them told me something different. So I was very disappointed in what was coming out of that administration.
Well, yeah, you could do, I'd think the management companies, if you know of some, we could get with them. Doesn't hurt to talk to them.
Okay. Is there anything else to come for the board today? Dawn, did you?
I just wanted to compliment you guys on putting that fire, the fire burning, you know, in your flyer. I listened to, we have a scanner and all I ever hear is, since that went out, is everybody's calling in and people are saying, I have a tractor here, I have water here. Where before they'd call in and say, I'm gonna burn, that was it. So this was very good.
That was all Dawn.
Very good.
Thank you for doing that. Yeah, she added that extra information.
Yeah, I love that you filled that thing out. Yeah.
Yeah, I was, yeah, I was trying to. And I, I wanted to say, you know, you always think of things afterwards. I don't give enough credit sometimes where it's due. So it wasn't just my, me that did that flyer. The appraiser's office, the registered Ds, the treasurer's office, county attorney and health department helped with it.
They helped work on it?
Yeah.
Great.
I may be missing somebody, but I'm not sure. Cause Hannah was on vacation, so. We were trying to design it into that legal size to meet the requirements and I couldn't get it to work. So Wednesday morning Hannah spent a low is gone fixing it and, and adding to, but yeah.
Yeah, thank you for doing that.
It took a mountain of people to help me and I really appreciate it. So, I, I don't want to go another, so if you visit with them, you might thank them.
Yes. Yeah, thank you all for doing that. It would be nice to get the commission to do some updates throughout the year like that. I mean, that's very helpful to put information out there. Do you happen to know what that cost? What we ended up paying, just a roundabout figure?
I wanna say about three-hundred and sixty dollars at, or postage.
Yeah.
And there was-
Did you print out of your machine?
Yes, I printed out of our machine and so there was fifteen-hundred and ten that went out, two pages, so you need to times out by two.
Okay, so three thousand. Well, even, but that postage- I know, I mean, we, we were expected to pay two-hundred and something for one ad for our HR position in the Florida Journal.
These flyers are-
I mean, that's a good-
These flyers aren't that expensive, yeah, you know, mailing, I think that's-
I think that's just something we could count on out of the commission's budget to do some updates, you know, periodically and not to take up too much of your time, but-
And also, I think people really see that, 'cause you can get mail, you're gonna look at it more directly. I think then if you get it, if it's in the newspaper-
Exactly.
A lot of people are complaining in Lincoln Sentinel, it was such a small print, they said it could read-
Need a magnifying glass.
So, you, but, uh, I think when they get something mailed to them, they, at least they'll glance at it, then they may toss it away.
And I feel like it was appropriate for us to follow through with that because if they did see it in the paper and were frustrated with it, at least they got another dose of it. And, and if they have questions, I mean, it directs them to us.
They can't complain we haven't talked to them about all this stuff.
I will say the seals, like, I don't think that they worked out so hot, but I just went to Office Max and bought what I could find.
I would disagree, they, they traveled really well.
Yeah.
And, and, and they peel off nicely.
And didn't rip them?
Cause I just felt like we were like constantly trying to repress them to get them to stick to the paper.
They, your folding machine needs to be calibrated though, 'cause they weren't perfectly aligned. I'm just saying that 'cause that was one of the things that I worked on, our machine. And it's, it's, 'cause they, it wasn't-
Yeah.
And which makes putting the stickers on harder.
I don't, at least so, if you guys don't have anything else, I gave you all the updates I think I had.
Okay, yeah, get management, be here, cool.
Okay, I will, I will.
Yeah, yeah, that was good.
Call in. I will adjourn the meeting until Monday the twenty-fifth.
So, it almost had a max line lens for the newspaper.
We missed it all, good.
Yeah. Yeah, I thought it was really good. The seals on mine, I, I am ripping, I don't peel them. But, you know, it was open, I, I liked it. No, I, I-
That was the only thing I, we really struggled with was giving.